Please join me.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to be slightly out of order from the printed agenda because people have some scheduling issues. Kathy, we're going to first start with.
I'm going to do the approval of the minutes of the June 20, 2023 meeting.
I move we accept as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you.
We're moving to item number nine. The Select Board will accept a variety of gifts in accordance with the MGL Chapter 43, Section 53A as follows. A memorial bench at Endicott Park Visitor Center from the Fraser family in memory of John Fraser.
And the town moderator will speak with respect to that gift. Did you want to say something, Pat?
Oh, with David. She gets to speak all the time.
Dave, could you go to the podium and identify yourself, please?
So I'd just like to say on behalf of the Fraser family, I'd like to thank the town manager and the Select Board and David for the recreation chairman for accepting this gift. I think it's an honor to have something at Endicott Park in my father's name. He was on the recreation committee in the early 60s when the town acquired the property. And he had a vision that the property would be just what it is today, open to everybody, and just a nice place for passive recreation. So it's ironic that his bench is going to be next to the Townley bench, who for 41 years developed that property and were the real architects and curators. And so I just think it's such an honor that that is going to happen. So thank you so much, everybody, and we look forward to everybody going up and sitting at it. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks, Pat, for being here tonight.
Are you going to vote each separate or all together?
Do we have to vote them?
We do vote them.
Oh, we do?
You can take them separate or en masse.
We'll take them together. Why don't we go to the second?
Item B, memorial bench at Endicott Park from Friends of Endicott Park, Inc., in memory of Dave Townley. Donation of $2,000 towards veterinary expenses for park animals and donation of $2,000 for five trees at Endicott Park for trees lost to disease.
I don't know that there would be anyone to speak to that.
Okay. And then first prize award, $1,500 from arson watch reward program to Danvers Fire Department for poster by Hope and Richmond Middle School student Charlotte Lewis.
Is there anyone to speak to that? Well, thank you all, but thanks especially to David and Pat and the Fraser family for being with us. And is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the gifts with an appropriate letter of thanks from the chair.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move to item number four. The Select Board will award a resolution of appreciation to Demarcus Enterprises, Inc.
Is there a representative of Demarcus Enterprises, Inc.? Would you mind going to the podium and giving us your name?
Good evening. My name's Megan Rhodes. I represent Demarcus Enterprises tonight. On behalf of the Demarcus family, they say thank you very much. They appreciate the recognition for all that they do for the community, and they would love to support the community more.
Megan, I think that senior board member Trask has something to say about that.
Thank you. I have a resolution of appreciation. We, the Select Board of the town of Danvers, Massachusetts, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the people of Danvers, as elected officials do hereby recognize with pride the generosity of the Demarcus Enterprises, Inc., a family-owned business operating the town of Danvers. And whereas Demarcus Enterprises, Inc. has recently been honored as the Greater Boston Food Bank's donor of the year, and whereas the problem of food insecurity affects 34 million people, including 9 million children in the United States, and whereas moving in and out of food insecurity adds stress to a household that may already be struggling with instability and unpredictability, and whereas food programs help millions of people find food and grocery help in their communities every year, and where protein-rich foods are vital components of balanced meals, and whereas organizations rely on the generosity and consistency of donors such as the Demarcus Enterprises, who last year alone donated nearly 450,000 pounds of food. And now therefore I let it be proclaimed that the town of Danvers recognizes with enormous pride and celebrates the positive impact and significance of the Demarcus family effort to help end food insecurity.
Thank you, Guy.
Second.
And now, do we vote this?
Yes.
Yes, we do. There's a motion and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And by acclamation, it is so approved. And I think we have an original. Do we have an original?
Yes.
We have an original. Guy, would you pass the original too?
Absolutely.
The representative.
Megan, thank you very much.
Megan has another meeting to go to. That's why she got bounced up on the agenda. Megan, thanks again for coming. Bye-bye. And for your service.
You're welcome.
Where are we, Kathy?
Now we're going to go to item number two, new public business.
The new public business is the opportunity for citizens to speak for no more than two minutes on a matter that they wish to be brought to the attention of the board. There is no vote, there is no debate, but there will be follow-up ordinarily. So who is, please, could you come to the podium, please?
How you doing, board? My name is Antonio Bentoncourt, 15th Thorpe Circle, town meeting member, precinct five. Reason why I wanted to speak to you is I know that tonight you're going to pick a person for the airport commission, basically. And I watched all five candidates and took a look at everything, you know, and played them all back. And I highly recommend that we get Mr. Maguire, Wayne Maguire. I don't know the man at all. I don't, just know by the way he was talking and speaking, that's what we need to help us. We have a problem at the airport. It's gotten a little bit better. It's starting to get sloppy again, okay? I was at the meeting last night, and I explained to them already, they're starting to pull the baloney again with the con wins, when the con wins, it's supposed to be 1-6, so it comes back on 2-7 again. So we're catching them in the act again. So we need someone to really help us out and put us in the right perspectives. And we've been having a problem with this airport for so long, it's unbelievable. We don't need airport people to come in. Everybody wants to build the airport up. Our neighbors of Danvers have to be represented first and taken care of, okay, as far as I'm concerned, and that's what it should be. I don't know if you're nice or aware, going to the meeting last night, I heard they're going to put up another hangar on the Danvers side. We've got to start thinking about getting some money out of these people, okay? They want to put up another big hangar over there and bring more jets in. They want to put, I think, one big jet, two small jets, about four or five other planes in that hangar. So they keep crowding us, and we're not getting anything. So we have to be smart about this, okay?
We're heard, and we pay attention to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mills, and I appreciate the board, and I'm hoping that you will help us and put us in the right direction.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Bradshaw, Bradstreet?
Bill Bradstreet Shaw, town meeting member, precinct one.
Forgive me.
I'm sorry.
You're my neighbor.
I know. At a prior meeting, there was a comment, I think, made about gas leaks in town. There were a certain number of them. My question is, what's being done about them? And if possible, where are they located? That's it.
Thank you, Bill.
Steve, they're located all over the place, and they are being repaired either as reported by customers or as identified by management. So if you're aware of any of those, you should let us know where, so we can pass that message.
We're working on it. Thank you.
If I may offer some comment on that?
Please.
It was identified there were 110 leaks in Danvers about three years ago, not of the first degree level, but second and third degree. I forget what the colors are. We had a nice fancy map. They're working on it very slowly. Many of them are right around Town Hall, around your neighborhood, my neighborhood, up to Ash Street.
I'd add to what I mentioned, one, two, on the town manager, and we see a dress like that, say, right outside the front door. Here we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, Dan?
Thank you.
Yep.
Where are we? Is there, are there any other citizen comments? Okay, we will proceed to the next agenda item.
The Select Board will meet recent town manager appointees to the Planning Board and Council on Aging. Both appointees, Elaine Hegan and Michael DeCoulis, plan to attend the meeting.
I see one or two. I don't see Mr. DeCoulis yet, but Hagan is in the audience and would like to go to the podium. She has graciously volunteered to serve on the Council on Aging and brings a lot of excellent experience to the position, and I'd rather than seal her thunder, I will allow her to introduce herself to the board.
I'm Elaine Hegan. I've been a resident in Danvers for 53 years. My children went to public school here, and I worked at Hunt Hospital for many years as a registered nurse. And I saw the opening for the Council on Aging, and I thought my healthcare experience would really contribute a great deal, my life experience, and I'm a senior, which, and I'd like to see the Council on Aging continue to be as vibrant and even more vibrant in their activities. So I look forward to being a member of the Board of Directors.
Thank you, Elaine. Elaine and I are personal friends as well as neighbors, and I think this is a wonderful, wonderful willingness of you to do this, Elaine. Are there board members you want to speak to?
Just want to thank you for your service, for your volunteer service to the town. The town runs on volunteers, and we appreciate when people step up. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Dan, did you?
No, thank you for stepping up. I'm sure you'll be in there.
Maureen?
I think it's great. Thank you. We need to take care of our seniors.
And Matt, have you something?
Yeah, just echo the previous comments that, thank you for your willingness to contribute your time to make Danvers a better place to work in.
Thank you, Matt. You don't, there's no vote on this, is there, Steve?
No vote.
It's his appointment.
Yeah, the policy of this year has been when new volunteers are appointed to boards and committees, they come before the board, at the time of their first appointment, introduce themselves to the board as a familiarity with each person who's serving on board committees. So Planning Board, Council on Aging, and Town Manager appointments, so both candidates were invited tonight. Mr. DeCoulis may be coming thinking this is a 6:30 meeting, but if there was a miscommunication...
Well, thanks, Elaine. You can stay if you want to attend this very interesting Select Board meeting.
Actually, I am, because something retired at 62 Pine.
Oh, okay. You can't talk on that yet. I think what we will do, if it's okay with the other board members, we will hold the, and hope that Mr. DeCoulis shows up. I also know him personally, and his house at the corner of Cherry Street and, I think it's Pickering, has got to be one of the most beautiful rehab refurbishes house that we've, I've ever seen in Danvers. And he's an architect, and he's superb, superb gentleman, so we'll hold for that. And Cap, go to the next agenda item, please.
The board is requested to vote to take by eminent domain the fee simple for the following roadways laid out by the board on March 21, 2023, accepted as town ways on Article 14 of the May 15, 2023 annual town meeting, and as authorized by town meeting to acquire said fee in the ways Cemetery Road, Fowler Street, and Riverview Ave.
I think that our town engineer, overworked as he is, is here tonight to speak to this.
No, never. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Mills, and good evening, members of the Select Board. My name is Steve King. I'm the town engineer for the Department of Public Works, Town of Danvers. I'm here tonight just to present and ask for the, well, give the presentation with the order of taking of the fee in way for the Cemetery Road, Fowler Street, and Riverview Avenue. This is the last step in our process for accepting private roads as public ways in the town of Danvers. We had a public hearing for the layout in March. We then had town meeting approve for the Select Board to take by eminent domain the order of taking for the streets listed on the, on the agenda Cemetery Road, Fowler Street, and Riverview Avenue. Now, in the last step, we do the order of taking, the eminent domain process. Once this is approved inside by the Select Board, we then record this at the registry of deeds within 120 days of town meeting, and then the roads then become public ways in the town of Danvers.
Thank you, Mr. King. Are there any questions from board members? Matt, please.
Good evening, Mr. King. You mentioned Article 14 from this past May's town meeting. There was a sentence in there that talked about damage awards. Can you just briefly explain what that would cover in terms of the eminent domain? Is that some type of payment to people that live along the street, or how does that work?
Damages would be a payment to a certain resident or a butter on the way that we were taking as, from a private way to a public way, if that occurrence was necessary. In the instances where we did a survey on these streets and looked through any potential conflicts, we didn't find any, there was no need to award any damages.
I see, okay. And the standard width of these streets is 50 feet? Did you do, when you did your survey, did you kind of use that as a benchmark?
Yeah, so some of these streets are prior to the subdivision control law, so they're slightly less than our standard 50, depending on how our subdivision control lays out different widths for, different public widths for different sized streets. But falling into the purposes where we've already considered performing public works, where public works are always taken accounting, picking up trash and refuse, snow plowing, doing all, you know, some amount of roadway maintenance, that we feel that these streets are in the proper category for becoming public streets.
Okay. So just one final comment. So we can assume that there's been no impact on residents in terms of the eminent domain, that they're all, they're all whole in terms of the way that things are today?
That's correct, yeah. Because we gave everybody the opportunity to review the plans earlier in the year. If they have any questions or comments, they can come right down to my office. And that's why we are starting to perform the surveys as well, to make sure we don't run into any conflicts with right-ofways or, you know, permanent structures within the right-ofway that we may have to pause and think about if we want to take that street on as a public way or make any changes.
Well, it's good that you've done, that you're due diligence, so that down the road there's not some type of conflict that arises perhaps during the sale of a property, a title search, or that type of thing.
Correct.
All right. Good work, and keep it up.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Matt. Do we ask for public comment on this? Any members of the public have any interest in?
It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing? Okay. Do we vote on this?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the specific language, legalese, and the clerk has offered us, yeah. I move that the Select Board take by eminent domain the fee simple of the following roadways laid out by the Select Board on March 21, 2023, accepted as town ways under Article 14 of the May 15, 2023 annual town meeting, and as authorized by town meeting to acquire said fee in the ways Cemetery Road, Fowler Street, Riverview Avenue. Said taking of each fee in the way as being more particularly described in the respective order of taking to be executed by the Select Board this date.
Second. In a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is a vote. Before you leave, Mr. King, I just want to say, being retired, I get to drive around Danvers a lot during the day when other people are working. And I am so amazed at the competence of you, your colleagues, and the department in trying to take advantage of the weather in the summertime to do all of the resurfacing on the roads that we're badly in need of it. And I don't know all the engineering, but I know that on the sidewalks and the ends and on those metal things that come up, it's got to be an awful lot of work. And in addition to that, I think you're supervising all kinds of reinstallation of worn-out water pipes in the town. So you're working overtime, you're not getting paid for it, I don't think, but in any event, you have certainly my applause and the applause of a lot of other people for doing such a great job.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate it. And as far as just the teamwork, as far as public works, we've all kind of working and chipping in together to make sure we're obviously watching all the work that's going on by all the contractors and making sure the roads are getting done correctly and the water mains are getting installed, sewer mains are getting replaced. Obviously, there's a lot of utility work. Danvers is an old town, a lot of old infrastructure, over 100 years old, so we're trying our best to keep up with it all and maintain it as best we can.
Well, the effort certainly shows to me, so.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a board comment? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
A public hearing will be held on the Danvers Electric Division and Verizon Joint Pole petition number 2023-0329-1 dated March 29, 2023, requesting permission to locate poles, wires, cables, fixtures, including anchors, guys, and other such necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way or ways. 68 Pine Street, pole 7-21-1.
Who is here to speak to this, Clint?
Hello, my name's Kevin Donley. I'm here representing Danvers Electric. We're asking permission to relocate a pole from the tenant parking lot at 68 Pine Street to, along the public way at the same address, 68 Pine Street. We're just going to move the pole about 12 feet out of the parking lot, so the tenants have a little bit more room, and the property owners would like to do a little upgrading in their parking lot as well.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board? Right here.
Members of the board first, and then public.
Let the board members speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you asked.
No, we'll be back. Board members first, please, are there? Matt?
Yep. Just a couple of questions. So the pole at the existing location seems kind of strange that it's in the middle of the parking lot.
Yeah.
And I noticed that there's a large transformer on that. Is that just to serve that, that specific address?
Yes.
Okay. And the new location, that seems to be still on private property, right? It's on the, on the side of the sidewalk, on that grassy area that seems to be part of the parking lot. Is that not the case?
No, that's not the case.
Okay. And what about guy wires or any other supporting infrastructure for that pole?
No, we won't need them in that location. There's not a lot of string.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, Guy, any question?
No, I'm looking at the Google map of this, and it appears that there's actually a pole there already, is there not?
The pole that you see, I believe, is in the parking lot, and what we'd like...
I saw the parking lot, but then I look across the street to, I don't know what the address would be, I guess 67 Pine.
Okay.
And according to the street view, there it looks like there's already a pre-existing pole there.
Correct. The pole line on Pine Street is on that left-hand side?
Yeah.
If you're heading?
Yes, yep.
So what, this pole is in the parking lot of 68?
Mm-hmm.
Which, there's a lateral crossing from that pole line on Pine Street?
Yep.
Going into their parking lot. What we'd like to do is move that pole from the parking lot, put it into, there's a little grassy area, right, adjacent to the parking lot?
Oh, I see the green mark. Okay, I was confused. Okay, I see the green mark.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that is on the...
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question, just a little housekeeping. Just, I walk around a lot in the neighborhood. Once these poles are always installed, the new ones, can we just make sure that they're kind of straight, all right, and, you know, cleaned up at the bottom, too?
Yeah.
So there's not rocks? Because I've noticed quite a few of them that are a little crooked.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Elaine, did you want to speak to something?
Hello, I'm just wondering.
Elaine, could you go to the podium, please, so we can hear you?
My question is, I'm not sure, is it the owner of the parking lot that wants this done?
Yes.
And because they just want it off their private property?
They actually want to do some upgrades to their property.
Okay. So I'm not sure where this pole is, that, which way are you moving it if you're standing in front? Is it 12 feet to the right or to the left?
It's going to come out towards the street. Actually, right underneath there, I have them out. So this is the existing, and it's going to come right out here.
So it's going to be on the sidewalk?
It's still, yeah, it's going to be right on the sidewalk line.
So, okay, it doesn't move down?
This is the existing pole line that we were talking about?
Right.
And it's going to cross the street and just go right down.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Any other questions or comments? Is this...
David?
Oh, forgive me, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think everyone can hear me, so...
No? Will you please go to the podium and tell us who you are?
Sure.
And tell the whole town, because you're on television.
Hi, my name is Samantha Parsons. I'm the owner of 67 Pine Street, so across the duplex, I think we might have spoken before. Yeah. So I guess I just wanted to know, is my electricity going to go out during the time in which you're doing the construction of the new pole?
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, all directions, questions will go to you.
Oh, yes, please.
And then back to...
Oh, sorry. David?
You asked, you say, "I would like to ask."
I would like to ask if our electricity is going to go out during the construction of the new pole.
Thank you. Is there a response?
You will not have any last electricity.
Okay. Then my other concern is just my property value, looking at a giant brown pole, which is going to be moved even closer to my property line. I know it's not on my property line, but it is still closer and very visible. And I was wondering if there's any way to move it so it's aligned, I have these two rock pillars, if there's a way to align it so it's just lining up with the rock pillar so I don't have to stare at a giant pole every time I go down my driveway and look out my window. So I know that's a very shallow request, but, you know, it's the view that I have on a daily basis, every day, and I worry about my property value with a giant telephone pole being even closer to my home.
Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we had a discussion about this a couple weeks back, and I explained that we would do our best to make sure that it was in line with one of those pillars. I can't guarantee it, you don't know what the ground has underneath, but we would give an attempt.
Okay, thank you.
And my final question, and this is me being naive, I apologize. I do not have an expert degree in public works or electricity, but is there, is there a way to put the pole underground, like all the wiring underground rather than above ground, or why is the reason why we have...
I think if we had underground wires throughout the town, I'd be so happy. You would not be happy because your tax bill would be about 10 times what it is now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Do we need a vote?
Motion to close the public hearings.
Section the motions.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the application by Danvers Electric Division to move the pole as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is a vote, and thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. Kathy, let's go back, if we could, to item number three, because Michael DeCoulis is here, and it may be short and swift to have this wonderful new...
Steve, did you want to introduce Michael?
Mr. Decoulis is right on time for the 6:30 meeting we normally have. The board decided to have the August meeting a little bit earlier in anticipation of a lengthy agenda. So, nope, we normally do start right now. But Mr. Decoulis expressed an interest in serving on the planning board, has a lot of relevant professional background for that role. And again, rather than sharing his qualifications and denying him the opportunity to introduce himself, I'd like to invite him up to the podium to say hello to the board and take any questions.
How you doing? As Steve said, my name's Mike Decoulis. I apologize, I was told 6:30, so I apologize for my mistake. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer as well.
Thank you, Mike. I happen to know Michael and his family going back years and years and years and years. And before you came tonight, Michael, I told everybody that my favorite house in Danvers is yours at the corner of Cherry Street and Pickering, and I go by it five mornings a week on my way to the YMCA to try to keep mobile. So truly, you, I was so thrilled to see your application and to know that the town manager appointed you for that. I think you're a great addition, and I'm so glad that you have volunteered.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Are there any comments or thoughts?
No, we're all for the same. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Right here.
Anything, Maureen?
I do, I think, Michael, thank you. I think it brings a lot of strength to the board, especially in being a registered architect, so you know a lot of the rules and regulations and how development goes. So I look forward, I think it's great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Maureen, Matt, did you have a comment?
I do. So let me preface that by saying that the planning board is, plays an important role in impact on the quality of life in any town. In fact, there are towns in Massachusetts where members of the planning board are elected. That's something that may, we may want to visit at some point in the future. Mr. Decoulis, can you just briefly tell us about any experience you've had with planning boards as an architect?
My experience with the planning boards as an architect is a little different. My, the firm I work for does a lot of work in the city of Boston, so if anyone's familiar with the city of Boston, there's a pretty intense process to get projects approved. So we do work with the BPDA, which is Boston's Development Authority, so we do a lot of work with them. So it's a little different than a small-town planning board, but similar in the sense that we go through a lot of work with local communities when we're doing projects, we work with the city of Boston when we're doing projects, going through multiple different zoning boards, all that kind of different stuff. So again, a little different than small-town type thing, but similar in the sense that we're still going through the process with every project that we work on with the city.
So I want to ask a question that I've asked candidates at other times, and I've been brow-beaten for and muzzled, but I would like to ask if you've ever attended a Danvers Planning Board meeting?
Not in person, but after I expressed interest with Steve and met with Steve, I went back and did a lot of research and looked online at a lot of the past meetings that were posted online. Yeah.
So you're kind of familiar with the format and the, it requires a considerable amount of homework before you-
Sure.
-attend the meeting.
Sure.
So that you're on even ground with the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
We oftentimes, I oftentimes think that the applicant often has an upper hand in terms of their understanding of the town bylaws, the zoning bylaws. And again, the planning board plays an important role. I just want to give one example of how important it can be. In my hometown of Goshen, New York, the planning board there approved a large project against the wishes of many, many residents. And it's called Legoland New York, which clear-cut 500 acres and built this huge theme park in a small, very small town. So that's the kind of impact that a planning board can have on, on a small town where it really alters the quality of life. So I'm hopeful that, that you can be a participant that, on the board, that can weigh what's good for the growth of Danvers, but also retaining the character of the town as we know it. So again, thank you for your willingness to serve and to dedicate some of your personal time, and I wish you the best.
I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Any other board comments? Doesn't require a vote, Michael. I mean, you have been appointed, and I'm so glad you came tonight. So glad to see you, and I was thrilled to learn that you are willing to do this service for your town.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I love your house.
Thanks.
Good night.
The board will consider the application of Drew Jaeger on behalf of Bent Water Brewing Company for a one-day malt and wine license at Endicott Park on Saturday, September 16, 2023, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for Onion Town Field Day in conjunction with, and to benefit the Friends of Endicott Park, with a rain date of September 23, 2023.
Are you Drew?
I am.
Welcome, Drew. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Drew Jaeger. I might be the only person here that doesn't know the Select Board, but-
You do now.
I do now, and it's a pleasure. So we were approached to join the Friends at Endicott Park again this year for their Onion Town Field Day, among multiple things that they have going on that day with food trucks, games, hay rides. They also requested us and a brewery called Twisted Fate to provide adult beverages. That section is intended to be located in the back orchard, which they basically section off and post-signage, no alcohol beyond this point. Our staff members working the event are in charge of IDing the individuals and serving them. Other than that, it will be serving out of our tap truck, which is a box truck that has taps built onto it. And it was a great event to be a part of, and love to do it again.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Questions from members of the board?
Just, I'm sure that I know the answer, but I have to ask, is the server's going to be tip-certified?
Yes, it was applied in the, supplied in the application.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have. Other than to the clerk, I'm assuming Twisted Fate will have to come before us as well.
Twisted Fate has submitted their application, but after this agenda closed, they'll come next meeting.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
And I suppose I could have asked the clerk, oh, yes, Matt, go ahead.
Have you participated in this event in the past?
Yes, the brewery did last year.
Okay. And did you encounter any difficulties or any, any problems with the, with the interaction of the participants, or the attendees?
No, not that's been brought to my attention whatsoever.
And you, I think you mentioned, it sounded like you were going to have sort of like a corral where people that had purchased your beverages would be required to stay within that confined area?
That is how it's been described to us. Again, we are more of a vendor for, for the event. The event's put on by Friends of Endicott Park. So what information has been shared with us is that the site location for us will be in the back orchard, and that will be sectioned off, that states no alcohol outside of that area, yes.
So what if people wanted to have something to eat while they were having a beverage? How would they, would they buy the food and then they were, would come into that confined area and?
I would suggest that, or hopefully they're there with friends.
Yeah, you want to make it kind of like it's seamless, right? You don't want to be too restrictive, I think, in terms of telling people, you know, we're talking about adults here, so we don't want to go be heavy-handed.
Yeah, and I definitely think eating, eating while enjoying a beverage is recommended.
Yeah, and also I would hope that it would be nearer, if there was live music, that it would be close by to that as well, so people aren't like, you know, 100 yards away from like where a band is. It would be nice if it was like right next to it. And then just one last thing, in terms of, I think, the IDing, you ID everyone that wants to make a purchase?
Yes.
Regardless of what, what age they appear to be?
I believe that the legalities state that there's a certain age that, based on, if you know that you can safely assume they are, you don't have to, but I always recommend to our-
Sometimes you'd better just card everybody.
I recommend to my staff that they do.
Because you're, you would be legally responsible if there were any underage.
Agreed.
Right. And you use wristbands or some other identifying?
Um, we've talked about it with Erica over there. In fact, I talked to her about it earlier today. I prefer it, but there, with two breweries being there, it adds, in my opinion, a little risk of, did they ID and give a wristband, or did we? So we're still on the fence, but I, I'm probably of the mindset that, no, you just ID everybody, even if it's their second time purchasing.
Well, maybe, maybe the people that are running the event, maybe they should be checking the IDs, like park rangers or whatever.
They were afraid of the liability of them taking the, checking.
All right, good enough. That's all I have. I wish you success with the event.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. To the clerk, this event is 10 to 4, as it is on the flyer.
The event is 10 to 4, but they're going to have need time to set up and break down.
So what time will they be serving?
Not till 10, but it's common practice for us to test all the, the lines, make sure that everything's pouring correctly, all of that. So we generally do a hour prior, it could be as little as 30 minutes prior, but we generally just, to play it safe, do an hour prior and an hour after, just to make sure that setup and breakdown and trying the, the beer, you know, is our product going-
What do you mean, an hour after?
Hmm?
What does an hour after mean?
An hour after just-
You mean served until 5 o'clock?
An hour after is just in terms of if the event runs longer than it's, it's scheduled, yes.
So I'm concerned there should be a shutdown time, prior to a last call of some type.
Yes, we, we defer to whoever's hosting the event, when they would like everything to stop.
Well, I guess it's the Friends of Endicott Park, but it's Danvers property. This board is responsible for the license, the one-day liquor license. So I think we should have a last call time, as in any other establishment. And the other question I had, I can't remember right now. Oh, I wanted to state that at the library, we don't restrict them to an area. The people are allowed to go to their seats, enjoy the venue music. We need to speak with whoever's running this to let them know that they should be able to allow people to go to a seat.
She's, the email that I received, that I believe Catherine received as well, states that it's at the entrances and exits of the back orchard, but I'm, I'm not directly familiar with the site specifically, so I'm not certain exactly what that-
Your location.
Excuse me?
You're referring to your location?
No, I'm, I'm referring to, I'm not familiar with Endicott Park and the layout.
For Endicott Park, it's going to be restricted to the orchard area in the back section.
Okay.
They're not going to float around the whole park.
Okay, but, all right, so they're not just confined to where that beer truck is?
No, the back orchard.
Okay. That's fine. But again, what is the last time they can serve?
The application has been requested from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The flyer says that the event is going to go from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., somewhere in between.
No, it doesn't feel okay. The event closes at 4:00 people leave, we're going to have people hanging around for an hour drinking?
No, that, that's not our intention.
No, not yours, but if you're allowed to serve till 5:00, and the event is over at 4:00.
Yes, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we will continue to serve.
I, I think we need a last call time in the motion.
That would be up to the board.
Yeah.
What do you propose, Dan?
Well, I probably would propose if, they're going to be until 5:00, that the last call's at 4:00, the last time they can serve, what's when the event is over.
Can that work for you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Till the event goes to 4:00, that's their last serve of the day.
So from 9:00 to 4:00, instead of 9:05?
Probably. They said they need the hour to set up, that's fine.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board members?
I do. So does that require a motion?
Yes, yeah. I just want to make sure there's a consensus with the board, and that the motion is to grant the application of Drew Jaeger on behalf of Bentwood Water Company for a one-day malt and wine liquor license at Endicott Park, Saturday, September 16, 9:00 to 4:00, for Onion Town Field Day in conjunction with and to benefit the Friends of Endicott Park, rain date, the 23rd.
That's a motion, and is there a second?
Second?
There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Drew.
You ready?
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Board will consider the application of McCarthy Restoration, Sean McCarthy, manager, for permission to occupy the public way on Conan and Alden Streets in front of M&amp;T Bank at 1 Conan Street for window work at that location.
Is there a representative? I guess so. Is that Sean McCarthy?
It is, sir.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, sir.
Tell us who you are and what you'd like to do.
Yeah, my name is Sean McCarthy, my own McCarthy Restoration. We'd like to perform some basically window caulking on the Alden and Conan Street sides of the M&amp;T Bank down there. And there's just failing caulking on the second and third floors that we'd like to address, because there's periodic leaking that is more of an annoyance at this point. So we'd like to kind of get in front of the situation and just make sure that there's no further damage being done.
If you'd stay there, Sean, there may be some questions from the board members?
Yes, sir.
Matt, do you have any questions?
Welcome, Mr. McCarthy. There was some work done on that building several years ago, I think, with the cornice or the upper part of the facade. Were you involved with that?
I was, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. So is this kind of the same type of impact where there'll be a kind of a boom? I don't know how you describe that vehicle.
It's considered a boom lift. This particular project is much, for lack of a better term, less impactful. There won't be full-time scaffolding up like there was before. Simply, there'd just be a boom lift either on the Conan Street side, there's several parking spaces that we can actually do the work within those parking spaces without really getting into the road at all. When you go around Alden Street, well, it's a tighter, it's a tighter fit, because there are, there really are no, except for, there's one handicap spot, which would be beyond our scope of work. We certainly wouldn't encroach on that. But we're, we're looking forward to working with the Danvers PD in terms of just getting a detail there every single day that we're there, and making sure that pedestrians and/or cars and trucks are, this is their city, we're just doing the work. So, and M&amp;T's happy to, whatever we got to do to make sure that it's the less impact we can possibly make it while we're just doing some simple caulking.
No real use of staging like in, at the past project where that was impacting pedestrians, and the staging was there for several weeks, I believe, right, for a while?
Probably a couple of months.
Couple of months, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it was, it was, that was pretty heavy duty.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. So, so the work will be relegated just to this boom lift, and the sidewalk will be closed as, so no one's walking underneath while you're doing your work?
That's the major concern, is while we're overhead, typically the boom lift is a basket, and it contains up to two people, and then we will always have a, a construction worker that just is basically considered the ground guy. So he's an extra eyes and ears with the two people that are working up there caulking, and working in, basically in correlation with, with the, the police detail we'd hire on any given day that we're there. And just to make sure that it's a safe working environment, that people are aware that things are going on overhead, and just keeping it safe for everybody, anybody that's going to get a slice of pizza or going to CVS and, you know, so nobody has to worry.
Yeah. So just to be clear, the sidewalk will be closed while you are working on the building during the day?
Yeah, we're hoping that, with the use of cones and some caution tape, that, we're not looking to block off the entire block. We're basically, you know, we kind of go window by window.
Yeah, I understand.
So I don't see any need to kind of block off 30 feet away from where we're working. Let them use what they can, and then it'll be up to the police detail and our ground guy to kind of make sure, you know, if that's the case. If the police detail says, no, we need to just make sure that they're going from crosswalk to crosswalk, that's not my call, that's their call, and, but we're happy to work with them. I just, I just don't want to see a situation where we're shutting down more sidewalk than we really need to on a day-to-day basis.
Is key. So if you work with the police department, I'm sure that's fine. And then just one last question. On Alden Street, there's only parking on one side next to the post office.
Right.
So how, how do you plan on, because the boom lift will be in the street.
The boom lift will be in the street.
So how will you?
Well, that, like I said, if, we're going to be really working closely with, with the, the, the Danvers PD. They've, they've looked at the same information you've had, and they sat with it for a couple, three days before they approved it.
Okay.
They didn't, just didn't sign it and send me on my way. So they sat with it for a few days. And, and again, it's just one of those things, I'm looking forward to working with them. If we got to get two police detail out there, or three, that's what we got to do, to make sure that traffic flows as best it can. There's a light there, I know that's a congested corner. I'm not from Danvers, but I've done a lot of work on that building over the years.
Yeah.
And I, I'm aware that that's, that's, that, that's an interesting intersection.
Yeah, okay.
It can be, it has its, it has its-
I'm satisfied that you've done your homework and considered different options.
Yeah.
So thank you for your, thank you for your explanation.
Anytime.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. Maureen, do you have any?
I'm all set.
Okay. All set? Dan? All set now? Will you vote on this?
Yes.
And is the public?
No. Motion to approve the application as presented.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? By acclamation.
Thank you, ladies, thank you, gentlemen, for your time this evening.
I agree, Matt. For item 10, the board will consider except- We're on item 10. The board will consider acceptance of the Climate Action Sustainability Preservation and Resiliency Report.
Now, Mr. Manager, who is best able to explain to all of us? In summary, because it's been before us before, in summary, what this, this report is all about?
That man is standing at the podium, Clint Allen, he's our Assistant Utility Director. You did receive copies of the report put in your packets for this meeting. This is probably exactly the same, excepting a few wordsmithing and grammatical fixes from the spring. Mr. Allen, before the board presented a draft of the plan. At the time, he asked the board to sit with the plan, to look at it. We asked any questions, he sent through me so that they could be addressed. Mr. Bennett did have several questions that he shared with Mr. Allen before the meeting prior to tonight, but we will be looking, if the board is comfortable with this plan, for a vote tonight so that Clint and his team can start working with staff and the appropriate boards and committees and stakeholders to start implementing pieces that are ready to go. That I would defer to Mr. Allen.
With that being said, are you prepared? In summary?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I did submit eight specific questions. Okay. I mean, we don't need to go through every page by page, and I think Clint has the questions. If you want, you want me to ask them, or you just want to address them and?
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you want to, yeah, I guess just in summary, so Steve, that was an excellent summary of where we were at. I think the last time I was here was in June. We formally presented the plan. I'm hoping everybody had, you know, had plenty of time to review. Received a number of very detailed, good questions from you, Mr. Bennett. But yeah, if you want to just dig into the questions, if there's.
Yeah, I would.
I might suggest that for those who didn't see the pre-probably, maybe a little summary.
Sure.
If people watching on television, could you just kind of tell us the concept?
Sure.
The plan, how it started off, what's been going on, and what brought us here tonight? And then we can go to the, to the specific questions that Mr. Bennett has shared with you and I think is a good place to finish up.
Okay, all right, yeah, that sounds like a good plan. So this actually goes back to 2019. The Select Board had come up with a number of questions for the Electric Division and some other departments in town regarding what, as divisions and as a town as a whole, what are we doing to sort of address this new, well, I wouldn't say new, but this, this, the impacts of climate change as they develop and, you know, in fact, you know, worsen. We ran through the list and the determination from those questions was that the town needed to create a climate action plan and a sustainability plan that would help Danvers do our part as a town as a whole, with the community, as well as the town departments, you know, try to mitigate the impacts that we as a town are contributing to the global climate. We began working on the plan a couple of years ago. We hired an ACE consultant that had worked on a number of other plans, including, you know, our neighbors, the Beverly-Salem Plan, the Resilient Together. We liked them a lot, and over the course of the last couple of years, we engaged the community in a number of different ways on various occasions. We had two different advisory boards, we met quarterly, and the goal was really, we wanted to have an equitable engagement across the town. We wanted to make sure that we heard everybody's voices, heard everybody's opinions and ideas. And after, you know, this year and a half, going on two-year-long process, we drafted the Climate Action Sustainability Preservation and Resiliency Plan, affectionately known as the CASPER. That is the plan that I presented with our Energy Resource Manager, Jeff Ely, back in June. And the plan essentially starts with a baseline. So we, that was, as I mentioned at the June meeting, that was a very big, that was very important to me when we were coming up with a plan is I, and, you know, we wanted to understand where is Danvers at now? What is our contribution to greenhouse gas emissions and where are they coming from? So over the course of about six months, our consultant performed this, the GHG, Greenhouse Gas Baseline Analysis for us. It's contained within the plan. It shows where our, you know, where our greenhouse gases are being emitted from. And it comes from, you know, primarily transportation and buildings and then, you know, also waste and the way that we handle our refuse and trash in town. Once we understood where we were at, we identified the six focus areas, which are energy, buildings, natural resources, public health and safety, transportation and land use, and solid waste. We identified, you know, who were going to be the champions of those focus areas. And then the plan goes into tangible, actionable items and recommendations for things we can do to start addressing how each of these areas is contributing to, you know, the overall impact on the climate. So we ran through the plan on June and we, I don't want to overstep, but I got some good feedback from the board. I was feeling the positive vibes, to be honest with you, and I feel like we're in a good position. And tonight, I'm hoping we can, you know, have a nice discussion, go through any open-ended question or any unresolved questions or comments. And then, yeah, as Steve mentioned, look for the formal adoption or approval of the plan. And then just as a, you know, just as an update to where we also are at, since June, we, you know, we continue to work, you know, behind the scenes, anticipating, you know, an acceptance in August or September formally. We've, we've met and we've actually identified each, the champion for each of the six planned focus areas, who that, who those individuals actually are, not just by title, but, you know, the actual person that's going to be on the team. We met, we're going to, we're going to have a kickoff meeting with the internal core advisory group, second week of September, so that's just everybody that's, you know, from town staff that was involved in the, in the advisory group to run through the next steps and like, and what we plan on doing first once we really start to get to work on the recommendations. We've identified the first primary focus we want to work on is receiving the Green Communities designation for the town of Danvers. We mentioned that a little bit back in June. You know, that's something that 290 communities, I think it was 282 back in June, it's 290 as of this morning, have received, and that will really help Danvers not only access grant money and additional funding to help to support this plan, but it will also give us guidance from some of the experts in the state about how other towns have, and communities have been successful implementing these plans. And it also, by starting there, actually checks off about six different boxes out of the 41 or so that were outlined in the action plan. So it's a good, it's a good place to start. And then additionally, I guess the last update is, I was speaking to another Beverly local community. They just created a position, a sustainability coordinator. I spoke with them and the reasoning for that was, they also have an action plan, but they've been, it sounds like it's been difficult to get really like a champion. They need somebody to oversee the plan, to help run with it. So we have a current open vacancy in Electric, and we're going to be adding some of the sustainability coordinator responsibilities to that role going forward. So we're hoping to staff that position in the next couple of months, which will just be that permanent body that can coordinate across town and make sure all the divisions and all the champions are staying on the same page and we're all continuing forward implementing the plan. So.
And so Dan, would you take it from there?
Thank you. First of all, Clint, thank you very much. The plan itself is excellent. I just had, as you could see, some probably simple questions, but I just wanted to be clear in my mind and also for people reading this.
Absolutely.
So on page seven, it talks about rebates. Can residents use both Danvers Electric rebates and National Grids for the same project? Are they the same Mass Save Grants?
No, so we're actually in a pretty fortunate position being municipal light plant, but that also has the natural gas services in town from National Grid. So if you are both a, or a natural gas customer from National Grid and an electric customer from Danvers Electric, you're entitled to both sides, both rebates. For like, if you were doing like a heat pump or a mini-split, you'd be able to receive, you know, the money from the grid and then the money from Danvers Electric as well.
Good, I'm glad to hear that because I investigated the rebates from National Grid on some of these issues, and with their rebates and the amount of gas that I use to heat my home, there's no payback period for me. So maybe if I look at double dipping on the rebates, that might make, make a difference.
Yeah.
Page 21, you state that 70% of our housing units are 50 years plus old. I would probably guess there's an awful lot, 100 years old. As alluded to before, our infrastructure is 100 years old. So what is the likelihood of these older houses for a quick and easy retrofit?
So it really is a kind of a case-by-case basis, but I'd say in broad strokes, you know, older homes have some, some, I mean, if we're talking older homes, like, you know, my home was included, built in 1890, but the knob and tube wiring is an issue. So if you want to upgrade to get electric heat pumps or electric appliances in your kitchen and go all-electric, you will likely need to get your house rewired and get rid of the knob and tube.
And I can tell you, that's expensive. I did that three years ago.
Oh, so you know, yeah, you know what I'm talking about.
I know about it.
It's no fun. It's no fun. Yeah, so that's.
But if you don't have the knob and tube, then it's a little easier.
Yeah, if you don't have a knob and tube, you have up-to-date wiring, that's a, that's a huge help. If you have a modern 200 amp service panel, that's a huge help.
Okay.
The, and then as far as like the, actually installation of the heat pumps, homes that were, are built that have the pre-existing ductwork, like if you had a central AC, that's a huge help if you were looking to convert to heat pumps because you already have that infrastructure in the interior of the home. Otherwise, you're looking at, most likely, the most cost-effective is doing exterior duct, which is, you know, you have the air handlers on the inside of the house on a wall, but then all the piping goes on the back of the house and it's.
Yeah, my wife said no to that already.
Yeah, there's, yeah, aesthetics play into that equation a little bit.
All right, so it'll be a case-by-case, but there's a way around those things.
Certainly possible, yeah.
Just a comment, trees, the canopy coverage by 2030 target is 46%. I don't think that's very aggressive. Right now, we plant 75 trees a year. Why not go to 100?
Yeah, I think, when I read that, I think that's a totally reasonable request.
Okay.
And then actually, when we were kind of kicking it around the group, the other question came up is, you know, when the Forestry Division is required to take down sick or dying trees, we should maybe talk about having a formal policy where we replace in-kind or even two to one, sort of. But that would be something that we, yeah, with, with forestry on board, we'd be happy to bolster that up a little bit.
So we are looking at that, great. There was no glossary in here, so some of my questions probably could have been answered easily if there's a glossary explaining, what's a level-two charger? I mean, I got a sense what it is, but.
So yeah, there's three levels of electric vehicle chargers. Level one is basically an extension cord, 120 volt extension cord that you plug into the car. It could take anywhere from, you know, 15 to 20 hours to fully charge, depending on the vehicle. A level two is more like a dryer plug, it's a 240 volt. That, if you install that at your home, that can take four to five hours, depending on the vehicle, again, to fully charge. Then there's the level three that, you may have seen the new Tesla level-three station up at the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza. So those are extremely fast. Those can get to like an 80% charge within like 20 to 30 minutes.
So for the average homeowner installing something, level two would be adequate?
Yes, yeah, and I mean, that pretty much guarantees that, you know, you can plug your vehicle in at night and when you need to use it in the morning, you'll be ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Page 35, transit stops. I didn't really understand that. We don't have any transit stops in town, to speak of.
Right, so this, I actually reached back out to KLA because I wanted to get a little bit more clarification on that as well. So this was really to help create connections between existing transit stops and employment or economic centers in Danvers. So for example, it would be looking at having better connections to commuter rail stops, like in Beverly or Salem, and then with the commercial corporate centers like Cherry Hill or Electronics Ave within Danvers. So we understood from our stakeholder interview and the planning conversations we had with the advisory group, we, you know, the MBTA is no longer in town and that was discontinued. That's not really under the town's control from our understanding from the group meetings. So we started looking at different options. One of those would be to partner with the North Shore Transportation Management Association. They've helped some other communities develop shuttle services and promote, you know, better corridors for like electric bicycles to try to better enable that connectivity to other communities where you might, you know, might be coming into Beverly, but I need to get to Danvers so I can go to work.
Okay, thanks. I just ask, when you get a chance, to prepare some type of fax sheet for rebates, yeah, good.
So I got, yeah, I can hand, I have some handouts if you'd like them.
Thanks. Solid waste. This is a conversation I'm going to have at the end of the meeting. We need to find a way to take styrofoam out of the waste, single-use plastics, textiles, food waste. That really wasn't in your purview on this particular area. That'd be more for our DPW, but I didn't see any mention of trying to reach any of those goals.
So I, that was another one I actually asked KLA to, you know, explain a little bit better. You know, on page 37, the way they define, reduce our consumption of disposable goods, that really, you know, in their vision would include single-use plastics and styrofoams. And then the first two actions under that issue would be 1 dot 1A, and that is to expand the existing plastic bag ordinance to target other types of single-use plastics. And then B would be expand sustainable purchasing programs within town operations. So, I mean, we could, within the plan, when we're actually, you know, developing the actionable items or, you know, when, when we're going to implementation, we can specify that that would be one of the targets.
Okay, great.
I would note also, recommendation 21B is to pilot a curbside composting program, which is something that is near and dear to, I don't even know, but Sami Day's heart. Discuss with Erica, deep enough, DPW, and then I think we'd like to circle back and, because that accomplishes two goals. One is solid waste and moving weight and tonnage from the waste stream, but also there's a sustainability aspect to that.
Right, great, so we're working on multiple tracks on that. Pace programs, a long-term financing and pace liens. That one lost me.
Okay, so PACE stands for Property-Assessed Clean Energy. It's an innovative program that helps commercial and industrial customers in Massachusetts finance energy improvements for their building. It was launched by Mass Development back in July of 2020. It's applicable to commercial and industrial buildings, owners of multifamily properties that have at least five units, and nonprofit organizations that own the buildings that they do business out of. And essentially, it's a program that lets, you agree to a betterment assessment that puts a lien on your property sufficient to repay a loan that you would secure through the program that would be extended by a private capital provider. And basically, it includes, you know, any energy efficiency or renewable energy improvements, such as boilers and furnaces, chillers, lighting, solar panels, insulation, air sealing, geothermal, solar hot water, energy management systems, energy recovery, or any kind of improvement on the energy redistribution system for a commercial or industrial customer. And essentially, there's, the town would have to vote to adopt into, to becoming a PACE member. There's currently about 70 other communities that have done so. Some of our neighbors, you know, Beverly, Salem, Peabody, Gloucester, have all done this. And, and then basically, so it would increase, it would have a, the betterment assessment would increase the property value of the property, so that, and that lien, the cost of that lien would cover the financing that would be secured through the private financing. But ultimately, it increases the value of the property. And so even if somebody goes to sell the property before the term of the lease has been paid, it will transfer to the next owner. So it stays, that value stays with the building.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm going to ask you to do that question now. In Connecticut, as long as 2010, the PACE program was available on the residential side as well. Is that something that is available to you now, or is that something that you should talk to the delegation?
Yeah, from what I've read, they're focusing on the commercial industrial sector right now.
And the concept there was that for the types of improvements you're describing, Dan, with return on investment, you may only plan to live in a house for five to seven years, the return on investment may be for 12 to 15 years. Connecticut enables assessors there to, after a third party confirmed that the savings were sufficient enough to pay back the cost of the improvement, that the payback would stay with the property and not the property owner, so that if you sold your home with those improvements, the next buyer would inherit the residual cost, but the property would prevent this out of the community. And it was the only way a lot of those projects were feasible on the residential side, because they'd go on payback.
Thank you. Page 53, the public and health and safety, number four, voluntary community training. How are we going to volunteer?
So one, one example, so like, the actual details of that planning, of the training itself will depend on, once we, you know, the outcomes as we step, you know, through the first three steps of that action item. But one example would be, you know, we could get funding for basically free training through FEMA's Community Emergency Response Team Program Certification, or CERT program. That would be that, you know, FEMA would send somebody to, we could, we would schedule the training. We would put it out through, you know, social media. We'd get, you know, we'd get interested, you know, students. And the CERT trainer would come in and basically train people in like basic disaster response skills. So during hurricanes, blackouts, you know, any kind of emergency, they would kind of step through like fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and emergency disaster medical response.
Okay, something to look forward to later. Many of your timeframes are short, two to three months.
Right.
Do you think you'll be able to hit those goals?
So the way it's structured is each, each step is really the two to three month timeframe. And if you look at the overall plan, they can, you know, go into the one, two, three year sort of timeframe. But, you know, working, speaking with, through the advisory groups on what we think we can realistically do, we're comfortable with the two to three month. It's just with that understanding, like first, we're going to be looking at the green communities designation. And that's going to be, you know, check, like I mentioned, six boxes off the plan. So those will, those will be parallel pass kind of concurrent actions that we're taking, but we're not going to start doing step one point one out of all six right off the bat. That would be, then the two to three months would probably be unrealistic.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager, how will they update this board going forwards to the boxes that checked off? The accomplishments will be, Clint giving us an update? Or you just have a memo for us saying that, um, some of the things that you've accomplished, so we have an idea of what's happening?
Thanks. So we do have, I hope everybody got a chance to check out the dashboard. So we do have the community dashboard. That will be updated in real time as we start making these accomplishments and start, you know, achieving some of these goals that we've set out to do. But additionally, I would recommend, you know, at least an annual or a biannual report. I'd be happy to send myself or a designee to come down and just give, you know, this is what we've been working on. This is what we're going to be working on. That sounds reasonable.
So periodic updates to the board. We could be looking at some sort of written, written reports periodically. But also, I think we want to direct people to the website that Clint and the consultant worked to set up, which can show people in real time what sort of progress we made.
I think it's going to be very important to engage the community in whichever way you can.
Agreed.
So they understand what we're doing and want to take some ownership on this themselves.
Yep.
I think that's key going forward. So Clint, thank you for your indulgence in answering my questions. And the board members, thank you. I'm very comfortable with this plan. I'm very happy to see this plan. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve this plan so we can move forwards.
I had a comment.
I'm sure you do, but that's my motion.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Uh, but we've got to comment. I just wanted to say that I'm. Yeah. I'm very pleased to see on page fifty-seven, number two, the conduct feasibility of school buses. Beverly is very successful in having electric buses that actually feed back into their system. And it turns out to be profitable to them as far as the, you know, the, the cost of the buses versus the return of electricity to the grid. So I am, I'm very interested in that.
And you're not alone in that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do. Yeah, I just, well, I think it's a great plan, Clint. Just a couple of things. When we talk about the grant money, do we know estimated how much grant money we're going to be getting?
It's really like a project by project type of basis, but when we looked into this a number of years ago, there was, the first year that you adopt into the green communities is when you have access to the most funding because you have the most work that needs to be done. And back then, you know, I don't want to throw any numbers out there, but it's, it's definitely worth pursuing.
Okay, so we're, we're trying to get the grants as much as we can.
Absolutely.
And, you know, other communities, our surrounding communities are all participating in this too? You said Beverly, Salem.
Uh, yeah, that's in the PACE program. And then the vast majority of communities in Massachusetts are, yeah, like two hundred and ninety out of the three fifty-one.
Okay, good, because we want to be there. I just, I love the book. North Shore Community College was the first state-owned energy building in the Danvers campus, right?
Yep.
So my question is, what about our Danvers High School and our other schools? Is this something that we're looking into?
I think for their, they went for a net, a net zero energy designation. That was, I think it was, you know, in the design of the building. But what we're doing for the schools going forward is we're very actively pursuing getting solar panels on three of the schools in town.
Okay, good.
So then that will, you know, getting that in-town generation will really help reduce any carbon-based electricity we have to buy out to market.
Right. And it's too bad we didn't do it when we were building the schools, right? But, you know.
The good is that the schools were designed for.
For it, which that's good, yeah. That's always how we do, right? When we build buildings, it's second phase, right, of things?
Right, right.
And then my, my very, my concern is always when we talk about the solar panels, you know, getting rid of those solar panels is, everything I read is really bad, right? Toxic.
They are, there is a lot of work and a lot of development going into being able to recycle the panels and trying to, you know, reclaim some of the special, like the heavy metals that are within them. So hopefully, we, you know, we have twenty, thirty years to figure it out, I hope.
Hopefully soon. I'll be dead by then. Where do the residents see where these rebates are offered? Through the Danvers Electric, page thirty-six, it said.
Yeah, they're on the Danvers Electric website.
Okay, just to.
And there's a link also on the, I believe on the business division website where you go to pay your bill.
Okay.
And we are, there's been, we've gone through, Mr. Trask, a lot of, a lot of pains with the rebates. He knows. So we are currently kind of tuning up the way we are issuing these rebates and the way we communicate these with customers.
Right. I think that's the message, like, let's get it out there, you know, and it's nice to hear it again, you know, with everybody on T V.
Yep.
The heat pumps through the Danvers Electric and Mass Save, right? So is it Danvers Electric and Mass Save?
Right, yes.
How do the residents go about that?
So as long as, like, as I mentioned earlier, if you're, if you have natural gas and you are a national grid customer and you're, and you're going to be replacing that gas service with, or up, or even, you know, just adding heat pumps to your home, you are eligible for National Grid's rebate. In addition, because you're also an electric customer for Danvers Electric, you are also entitled to the rebates from, from us. So.
Just to show us where that is.
Yep.
I think when it says in the book, which is really good, education and outreach is very important.
Yes.
That's what we want to continue doing that. If we have to bring it before meetings every once in a while, you know, so residents know. What was the thing? Page forty-three, save money and reduce trash. Smart into Town's New Waste Franchise. Are we getting ready to do this with what's going on with our trash contract and everything? I think it's on page forty-three.
Yeah.
I think we're going to discuss that. Have a trash discussion tonight?
Okay, yeah, okay. That's okay. We can sidebar that then. And then I just know, maybe you can talk to, put it out there, that Mass Save does offer some low or no interest programs for people out there. You know, myself being a loan officer, you know, search your cities and towns and see if there's any, you know, we talked about rebates. Let's talk about, you know, maybe, I don't know, about zero percent interest rates anymore, but lower interest rates to try to have people save money, you know, for energy and to do, you know, what's right.
Yes. Yeah, and we're actually working with our energy consultant, Energy New England. They're looking into offering a way that we, they can, that they will be able to finance similar loans for municipal, so if you have like oil heat, you wouldn't be entitled to those, those seven-year, like zero percent. So they're looking at a way that, to enable the M L P, municipal light plants, to actually have a similar kind of financing package they can offer like, like the investor-owned utilities.
Good, yeah. So we just want to make sure that we get that message out to people when it's available. Thank you.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you, David.
Matthew.
I do. All right, well, thank you for your previous presentation, I think it was at our last meeting. So tonight, you're asking us to approve this plan so that you can move forward in terms of opportunities for grants and that type of funding? So I don't have a problem approving the plan, but I do have some, some concerns about the focus on electricity, specifically the migration to electric vehicles. And I think it was a hundred percent by twenty fifty. That seems overly aggressive and optimistic. And I'm just concerned about the impact it would have on residents in terms of, or actually ratepayers of Danvers Electric to build out charging stations and the ability to charge your vehicle at home. Because I don't think the current infrastructure would support every house in Danvers having the, you know, charging a vehicle in the evening. Have, have you given that any thought?
Fortunate enough to have Jason Small, our engineering operations manager, sitting in the crowd. I won't call you up, Jason, it's okay. But no, that's something that, I speak on behalf of Jason and, you know, his engineering team and kind of Danvers Electric as a whole, but that's a, and, and really the electric utility as a whole, that's a huge concern. You can't go to any conference, any kind of a training. You can't go, you can't read an email that's not about the, you know, the future electrification, how it's going to impact the grid, and how are we going to be ready for it? So internally, we already, Jason and his team have, you know, already developed a long-range planning team and process. We're already running forecasts out to twenty fifty with various scenarios, you know. Because is it realistic that everything's going to be a hundred percent electric, you know, in twenty-seven years? I don't know, and I don't think anybody knows. But we want to be prepared for that. So we have kind of, you know, like a yawning gap type of chart. So we have, you know, assumed low growth, you know, conservatively, and then we have, you know, an aggressive one. So now Jason and his team are running it through, you know, our modeling software, and they're starting to take a look at, you know, what do we need to look at first? If, as, you know, people start getting the level-two chargers, start getting, you know, full electric heat and cooling, what is that going to look like? And what is the impact of the grid going to be? So that's, that's an excellent point. And that's something that's, you know, a very big concern industry-wide right now.
I just mentioned that as an example, because many people want to do the right thing until they look at the, the cost of it. And then they, they're like, they don't really, they want to back off. You know, there's, I think in twenty twenty-one, there were a hundred and five, a hundred and three million registered gasoline-powered vehicles in, in the U S. And to think that even a small percentage of those could be, you know, the owners would switch over to electric, I think is kind of optimistic.
I can speak to Matt. I think one of the things I challenge Clint's team every time we're looking at these is to be aggressive with the rebates, but everything that they do is based on ROI. So the, you know, the advantage of increasing the number of electric vehicles is that we are essentially, we are, Danvers Electric is the gas station. So by having them charge overnight, they're buying the electricity to charge that, is putting their dollars back into the electric division. But to the point you're making, there will, there will not be an ordinance in twenty forty-five as banning gas vehicles. But the idea is that the, I think the conditions, the resources and availability of charging will change as hopefully will the incentives and the costs will come down so that it becomes an easier choice for residents to make.
Sure.
Not mandating, but making it easier. And I think, you know, what Clint needs to look at is if we're going to provide a rebate or an incentive to put out a house to accept the gas or an electric vehicle, it's going to make economic sense for the resident to take advantage of that. But we're also going to know that we'll see a return on investment for years, for years, so that we're also, the dollars we're spending upfront to incentivize the change, we're going to get back, and then it's profit after that.
Right. And just to follow up on that, I think in the next twenty or twenty-five years, California will mandate that all new motor vehicles are electric. So it's not out of the question that that will, that line of reasoning will permeate across the country.
So I didn't say that it wouldn't be mandated. The town of Danvers certainly will not be.
Yeah, I understand. But Danvers Electric is in the business to sell electricity. So there's some bias there to promote, you know, that your life, your house uses electric heat, you know, your vehicle is electrically powered. So I, I'm just kind of cautious about the, the theme of, of the plan, how it can be kind of construed as not really what's best for the residents. You know, and this is a worldwide problem. It's not, you know, isolated to Danvers or to Massachusetts.
I would just say a couple of, more of our power portfolio each year is becoming renewable and moving away from non-renewable, non-renewable. So there's, I think that that ties into the plan in the sense that we're moving people away from non-renewable, non-renewable, pure renewable energy. But Jason, Jason is a very conservative guy in terms of his approach to his work. And the concerns about the, the power grid and Danvers being able to accommodate this is something that is being very focused on. And just to be very clear, the, the rebates and the incentives and the upgrades that we're talking about for the grid have to make economic sense long-term for the division and the ratepayers. So we wouldn't be chasing these designations for the sake of chasing them if it didn't also help us. And I think Clint alluded to it, and I'll, I'll hammer it with an explanation point, that we're in a really strong position because we own and operate our own electrical plant. We're not National Grid. So National Grid benefits greatly when residents and customers make these changes at a corporate level. All of the benefits we are reinvested in the community. And that sets us apart, us and the thirty-nine other, like municipal light plants in Massachusetts.
That puts us in a stronger position, even though we don't achieve the goals, just the, the simple fact that we're making the attempt. I think, you know, down the road, future residents of Danvers will, will, will look back on our efforts and, and probably commend us that at least we tried to do something, even though, you know, it wasn't a hundred percent successful. So. Again, I support the, the plan and the dashboard, I think, is kind of in its early stages. I think it will become more robust over time as you hit some of these bullet points that you mentioned, you know, the one month, three month, you know, a year over year, that residents can go there and get real-time statuses for these different, different items. So. I wanted to talk about solid waste too, but it sounds like we'll be discussing that later, so I'll skip that. But thank you for your efforts on this.
Yeah, but let me just check up.
We can do that now. I don't have it as a specific update, but if there are questions, sir.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, Steve.
Okay.
Do we want to deal with the motion and then Matt go, we're going to.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a, my waste folder is getting pretty thick. So I have more than a few questions and comments. Perhaps I was going to do it under new business.
Well, yeah, I think that.
Because it really doesn't affect Clint.
Right. I think we're going to, I think it may be appropriate for us to consider now the motion and second, on the adoption of the plan. And then, my understanding, Stephen, unless I'm getting this wrong, we're going to talk trash tonight.
I'm always up to that.
Okay, well, I think we're going to talk trash. But I don't think you have to stick around unless you want to.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
And so the motion and second, as to the adoption of the plant, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. It's unanimous. Nice work.
Terrific. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. I just want to thank all, you know, take this opportunity just to let everyone know, the community, the other town departments, town administration, we've had a lot of support for this plan. And I want to thank the board for kind of ushering this plan into existence and being kind of driving force behind it. And we're just excited to get to work. So this is great news. Thank you.
Okay, put us on next.
Item eleven.
Trash. At some point, we want to talk trash.
Item eleven. The board will consider putting forward a candidate for approval by the Beverly City Council to represent Danvers on the Beverly Airport Commission.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Who would like to begin discussion? We have.
Well, I have some comments to make. Be ready.
As I understand it, we have five candidates. We've had five resumes before us for the past, I think, two months. I have been present to hear and interview all five. And perhaps tonight is a night that we could select one of the five. And why don't we start anywhere? Who would like to start discussing the candidates and what we should do tonight?
Well, the process.
Sure.
We had two nights, five candidates, five willing candidates. And I went back and reviewed the first meeting on the first three to compare them with the second two. I was a little, I like the fact that one particular candidate let us know of his interests before this meeting. That tells me a lot. But I was a little turned off, if you will, because that candidate kept referring to Chairman, I mean, Select Board Member Trask. And the references should not include Town Manager of Board of Selectment. And he referenced Gardner in two emails. I found that a little troublesome. But that's his nature, obviously. And then we have to consider that some of the residents have a candidate that they prefer, which kind of, you know, I want to give them some support with a candidate. So it makes it a little difficult. I've got two names and a third that I could support. I've got two names and a third that I could support, but I would like to hear from the other members of the, the board.
Sure. Matt, did you want to go next?
Well, I have, I have two candidates in mind. I don't know if we want to, uh, whittle it down to, uh, to two and then kind of make a choice, or do we want to just, uh, choose from the five right off the bat?
If you mention, if you want to mention the candidates that you favor, um, I think that's appropriate.
Okay. So I, first I just want to say that I'm kind of looking for someone that's kind of not on, uh, too extreme, um, on either end of the spectrum, so someone that's, uh, uses the airport all the time and is a really strong proponent of the airport, um, and then also someone maybe that lives, uh, close by and, and hates the sound of airplanes. So I think both of those I would kind of eliminate off the bat. So I'm looking for someone that's kind of middle of the road and can be, um, even-handed in terms of how to, uh, you know, how to look at the issues. So I have, uh, two candidates, Luke McCall and Wayne McGuire, that I would, uh, that I would, uh, choose from the list.
Okay. Maureen, would you like to...
Yeah, I, um, it's, it's hard, and I want to thank all the candidates for coming up. I would pick out of two, I'm going to pick out of two, that, um, you know, we want the neighbors, what's good for the neighbors. I, um, wanted Wayne McGuire and Vincent Mioli.
Okay, did you want to say anything else about them or about your preferences?
Um, well...
You don't have to, just...
No, I, it's, it's really hard to choose, but I want someone that understands it, that's really for the neighbors, um, but those are my two choices.
Thank you. Gary?
Did you want to mention the names you have, Dan, before we...
No, go ahead.
So I think it's, um, I, I have a clear preference, and I'm going to make a motion to make that person's preference, I did last time. Bill, Bill Casan's reference to me in emails to the board is because we've known each other for 25 years, and we've known each other for 25 years through the airport. I'm looking for someone who's...
My point is, it's not a criteria.
It's not a criteria, but it shouldn't be a detraction either. You, you raise it as if it's a, a detraction from, or, or, or a negative in some manner. And I don't believe it's a negative to, to suggest that he, I, I've had experience with Bill, um, and he is not, um, I, I'm going to, to make a motion to, to recommend him. I've, I went back and looked at all five again, as you did. I looked at, um, Bill having extensive experience with the airport, and not as a, um, flag-bearing, you know, champion of the airport. He sent emails to us, and he notes some of the issues that came up the last two meetings. And by the way, he was present at the last two monthly meetings, I was there, and he was the only candidate who showed up. The other candidates, you know, knowing that they were, uh, applying for the job, I would have thought, you know, Mr. Duggan has mentioned before, have you attended meetings? I know Bill's been attending meetings for years. I looked at the other candidates. Dr. Milo, I, I found, um, it's going to sound odd, but I found him too pro-airport. He was very dismissive of the neighbors' concerns when he was here that night. He was to the point of being almost argumentative, and we had to stop the discussion, because he was, I, I like airplanes, I think airplanes should be there, and he did not seem to embrace empathy for the neighbors. The others, Todd, uh, is an experienced pilot, Wayne is an experienced pilot, and Luke had no airport experience. He worked for, uh, the, he worked for, uh, mass, uh, transportation. You need someone who understands flight, someone who is a, you know, I would say a pilot, or enough interest into it that they, they understand that there are limitations. The FAA controls everything off the ground, they have to make decisions. But Mr. Casan, I don't know if he sent the same email he sent me tonight, based on last night's comments and discussions, but he does have some concerns about the fact that we have low landing fees, um, uh, and should be increasing those to, you know, to, to tamp down, um, the 5% of the touch-and-goes that come from outside of the Beverly area. He's here tonight. He does show a strong, exhibits a strong interest in the, the, um, the role, and I am, I'm going to motion that we forward to the city of Beverly, uh, Bill Casan is the, uh, as the, um, as the applicant, as the person we would like to suggest be the, uh, be the representative for Danvers. That's a motion.
Okay, there was a motion, and I'm prepared to second that motion. And, uh, Dan, did you want to make comments or questions?
I, I've made my comments. Mr. Casan was the only one that wrote to us ahead of this meeting to confirm his interest. He's here tonight. He shows that he is more than willing to do the job, and while it was, Mr. McGuire is a good candidate, I'm going to go along with Mr. Casan.
Thank you. Now, there's a motion and a second, and is there further discussion on the motion?
Can I make a motion for McGuire? Or no?
Well, we're, we're, I think we first have to vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Point of order.
Okay.
If Maureen would like to make an amendment...
Amendment to the motion?
To the motion. The motion's on the floor, and if you'd like to make an amendment to the motion, and it's seconded and passes, that becomes a main motion.
Okay, I'll make an amendment to the motion for Wayne McGuire.
Okay, there is a motion to amend, is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. So as far as discussion on the motion to amend, uh, okay, well, then we'll have a vote, all in favor of the motion to amend?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So that, that motion fails, and so we're back to the motion, if I remember my Robert's Rules, back to the, uh, original motion, that's the main motion on the floor. Is there further discussion on the main motion on, that's on the floor? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Well, thank you, that is a vote, and we'd like the authority that makes the vote.
We pass it on.
We, so the process would be, and I speak from a place of being there, now what will happen is the town manager will let the mayor know that, that, that we have forwarded a candidate, and then the, they, they will have their, uh, the city council, uh, review and decide if that's what they want to accept. This is really Beverly's, Beverly's approval, with a strong recommendation.
Okay, thank you for that, Gary.
Yep.
Now, let me just ask, is there anything else that the board needs to do other than, congratulate, uh, Mr. Casan? Congratulations, Mr. Casan, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Anything else? Are we on to the next agenda item?
Sure.
The board will review a draft of a document entitled Public Participation at Board and Committee Meetings.
Thank you, um, Madam Clerk. The, this agenda item, I don't know how it came to me, um, but the town's lawyer, which is a law firm that I have great respect for, um, forwarded a document to us, um, kind of a template of a proposed public participation protocol for public meetings. This is all occasioned by, as well as I can recall, the Massachusetts State Supreme Court, about two months ago, issued an opinion having to do with the right of citizens to be angry and to criticize the public business and, uh, actions of public employees, um, in public. And, um, it's kind of a far-reaching decision. When I read it, I'm not, not surprised, because I believe our state Supreme Court is a very competent and very, very thoughtful court. I still said, wow, this is kind of, kind of strange. I don't want people standing up at the podium and calling me a Nazi, frankly. In any event, so we got this document, and, uh, I asked Ian to circulate it in the package to the board members, and I do not, it's not on the agenda for any vote tonight, but my suggestion is that we talk about it briefly to the extent that anyone is willing to do that, and, um, I also received an extremely thoughtful, uh, comment from, uh, my colleague Gardner, um, which I thought made all kinds of wonderful sense and reminded me that this is something that's important, that it is something that we should discuss, and that it is something that is hardly ready for any formal vote, um, tonight, but I'd like to ask...
Point of information, if I may, um, through you to Selectman Gardner, when you received that, did you have in context the memo that went out August 7th?
All I got was, I, I got this in my packet.
So...
And I actually asked, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I actually asked what the context of this, where this, I, my words were, where did this come from? Basically, why were we getting this, and who was the, uh, champion for this, for whatever we're doing? And, you know, I, I, in my head, I thought perhaps it was related to a response to some of the First Amendment auditors who've come to Town Hall and how things have behaved there, but, uh, or the dynamics of meetings recently, uh, outside of town. So if you have some context, it's great to know.
What, and I, and I think the original August 7th memo from Murphy Hesse, to me and Rehane should have been sent out in the packet.
Oh, you thought it was, Dan?
No, we just got, and I, I'll take the blame for the draft.
I got that cold.
Right, well, I, I edited it and assumed that this would go with it for reference, and that would probably clean up some of your, your questions, but this really goes back to the municipal alert dated March 16th, and then it took them to August to issue this draft, if you will, and there was one for the school committee as well as the Board of Selectmen, but I would probably think we should have this original document sent out to the members so they can compare the two, and then make their comments based upon the context, because actually, the one draft is in the vacuum, they're looking at it.
Right, I saw, and, and I'm happy to, in public meeting, discuss my questions, and maybe they will be, uh, assuaged by that document, which I did not say.
You'd need to read this to understand that.
Well, but again, I'm seeing this as a, you're right, as cold, and not seeing the context behind it, but if you're going to make a statement, other people won't see the context behind it. So I'm just wondering if, you know, if, if, I, I can follow your lead, I'm happy to wait and come back after seeing the, the, the document from, uh, the lawyers as to why, what's the impetus for this?
May I speak?
Yep, please.
I'm sorry if I've cluttered this with, um, people in the audience don't know what the hell we're talking about. So let me, let me try my... The State Supreme Court came out with a very interesting decision, essentially broadening the rights of citizens to say practically anything they want to in a public meeting, provided that it is not inciting to riot, that it is not violent, um, that it is, I suppose, within certain rules of decorum. I guess the chair could say, really, let's not go there and stop it. But otherwise, a great more freedom for people to be speaking, especially as we have our, um, beginning comment period here now. So a proposal, a draft form of protocol, rules for public bodies, came in from the town's law firm, um, who I respect a lot. I have watched the lawyers for this town for 54 years. They're a good firm. I think they probably represent 30 or 40 or 50 municipalities. I think that probably, they didn't prepare this document for Danvers, they prepared it for all their clientele to look at it and say, take a look at this if you want to consider the adoption of protocol for decorum at public meetings. So...
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, Steve.
And I, I was camping last week, so I haven't seen that memo either, but I assume...
I know you were camping, and that's why...
I assume that the memo for March references the details of the Bering case versus Southborough. And just the content, to be very clear, Murphy Hesse, to me and Rehane is not recommending that the town adopt or not adopt any particular policy. I believe what was attached to that was an example. But the, in the case, I think the, the Mass Municipal Association, certainly all of my colleagues were sort of dumbfounded, I'll, I'll be less deferential to the Supreme Judicial Court. We were dumbfounded that the Supreme Judicial Court chose to reach down and take this case for review when it had been resolved in Worcester. But the, in particular, what happened in this particular case is that the, uh, the Select Board, I believe in Southborough, was going through their tax classification hearing, um, and a resident became ill-adjudged and started calling the Chair Hitler, and the Chair closed down the meeting, not knowing whether this Chair may have been Jewish, or whether, or any other number of details. And the, uh, the, uh, the resident was, claimed that, that her First Amendment rights and civil rights were violated by the Board. The, uh, the Court in Worcester threw it out as absurd, um, that claim, and their Supreme, Supreme Judicial Court reached down, took the case for review, and sided with the, uh, the claimant, and in part of their decision, referenced, uh, the revolutionary period when, um, colonists had the right to criticize the king. And what I think was missed in that decision is that, uh, that the Court suggested that Southborough was trying to insulate itself from criticism. I think that's absurd. I think that the Southborough Board was trying to insulate itself from being called names like Hitler and Nazi. I've, I've never seen a Select Board or Town Council anywhere that is not okay with being criticized for the decisions that they make, and I think that's what got lost in the details was, um, boards are open to criticism as long as the criticism is civil and not personal and not, you know, inflammatory, derogatory. Basically, what the Supreme Court did is made chairs, and we're fortunate right now, Mr., as a judge, so he has a...
Was, was a judge, over the dam.
Well, was a judge, but, but the Supreme, the, the Supreme Court essentially said that chairs of Select Boards and, and mayors and, and council presidents across the Commonwealth need to have a, uh, an amateur degree in law to be able to determine what is or is not both fighting words or quote, uh, acts that may lead to violence. And if they err in their judgment in shutting down debate that they believe is violent, the Court reserves the right to determine that they were wrong, and they may be personally liable, uh, for closing down that debate. Now, as was pointed out, that has not been the case in Danvers. We've had vigorous disagreement at public meetings, certainly during my tenure, um, those disagreements have never become personal, um, or led to the need to close down meetings. They certainly have been passionate, um, at either times. But I think what, what Murphy Hesse provided was guidance, should boards consider some sort of written policy describing the type of dialogue that they would hope for, recognizing based on the Supreme Court decision, but they cannot stop that at this point, uh, in most cases. So, um, certainly I would, you know, as the town manager, I would not be recommending any sort of action tonight. I think it would be worth having a discussion in a future meeting, but as an alternative to a formal policy, we also have the option of working with Murphy Hesse to develop some sort of advisory, uh, for our boards and communities, just to make sure that they understand, um, there's been a lot written on the subject, or what the parameters of managing, you know, public debate, public speech are and aren't at this point in the Commonwealth.
That's very helpful, Steve. I think that's very helpful. My, my, my thought, I, I, I went to a Jesuit college and a Jesuit law school, and sometimes Jesuits can kind of reduce things to like two sentences, and it makes a lot of sense. I'm just suggesting, the State Supreme Court's decision created anxiety among a lot of people like me about how to run a public meeting to comply with the law. The second thing is, you know, we have some papers floating around here, the question is, what if anything should the town, this Select Board do with respect to that court decision? And one of the things is to look at the protocol that our lawyers have sent, others, I believe, to look at the superb thoughts and comments that were generated by Gardner, and additionally, some excellent thoughts generated by, uh, by Dan. I've only, I try to simplify it to two sentences, and I don't know exactly what we should do, but it's, um, there is a threat that a chair ruling on somebody's behavior and language in a meeting could be subjected to a lawsuit, and the town could, and it could be money and risk and threat. Nobody's going to jail, um, but it's an uncomfortable thing, and my question is, what if anything should we do to be responsible as a board in response to that decision that makes things kind of up in the air of what can and can't be said, and what can and cannot be ruled as proper, as part of the public, um, debate?
So, Mr. Chairman, when I got this, I, you're, Dan's right, I got this without the context of, of the speed provided tonight. But I look at this and I say, I think there should be guidelines. I think there should be published guidelines for any board commission committee that says, this is how we think Chairman or body members should be, you know, should be, you know, able to respond as needed. But I also err heavily on the side of, probably more with the Supreme Court, that this is a First Amendment, and calling me a Nazi... that this is a First Amendment. And calling me a Nazi, calling me Hitler, as abusive as it is, and I wouldn't like it, we give them a certain amount of time to make their case, make their statement, go ahead and do that, as long as it's not a criminal act, as long as they're not accusing me of being something that is criminal. There are guardrails. But simply being loud or boisterous while it's affront, is, is, I, I listen to the Town Moderator every year. It's an affront to the Body. But our world has changed. We've had people in this Town Hall badgering and belittling and berating Town Employees for doing their job and not responding to the manner that those people wanted a response. There should be some guidelines about what, how you can respond or not respond. If the response is, I'm not going to listen to you, berate me and belittle me and yell at me, I'm leaving the conversation. There should be guidelines. I think some of the things in here about limiting the number of speakers at any one night in an open meeting was, wasn't something I would embrace. I think that there are protocols. So if, if 10 people show up at a meeting and they want to speak on the same subject, let's say the parking at St. John's Proud. We had a roomful of people, then maybe it's, okay, allow, you know, allow that, the first person to get up and talk about it and ask if there's anybody else who has new comment about the same thing.
At the ag, you're not at the prep, I think.
I'm sorry, you're right, at the ag. But not to, but at some point, you limit, you limit, unless it's new information, you limit that. Only so the meetings can be manageable. And those are some comments I made in my, in my response to you. But I think that there is, I, I, I saw this and the question I asked is, where did this come from? And what are we trying to do? I think we're trying to explain to Boards, Commissions, Volunteers, you don't have to sit there and be subjected to profanity or whatever it might be in the course of your work. That's not expected of you. But we can't control the world and, you know, the, the world is vastly different from when it was ladies and gentlemen's always. And it's fortunately not creeping into Danvers as much, but you can look at it on any YouTube and see just outrageous screaming. Now, I always defer, I keep with me all the time in, in my, my selectmen book, Master of Law About Open Meeting Laws. And it's pretty, pretty pointed and specific. The, the Chair is the only one who can recognize someone. People can't talk unless the Chair recognizes them. The Chair has the right to stop them. And if they're, if they're, if they're over, if they have to be stopped, the Chairman can give them warnings and eventually have them removed if necessary. I think some of this other language should be worked out, but I don't, I like the idea of having a guideline for Boards, Committees and Volunteers.
Thank you. If I may?
Yes.
In the August 7 memo, it suggests that anybody that wants to speak at public, speak, we'll call it public comment, not speak, notifies the Chair 48 hours in advance by email. I thought that was ridiculous.
I think that's wrong. Yeah, I didn't see that and I would have.
That in order to speak and be recognized, Mr. Bradstreet would have to notify you 48 hours in advance in order to get permission to get up to speak. So that's why I took out a lot of stuff and kind of left the meat. I took out the potatoes and vegetables.
And I'm, I'm happy to share the comments I provided to Mr. Mills, but I didn't want to get into, I didn't want to get into open meeting law.
No, I think we, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dan. No, 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 go ahead.
I think if we table this and look at this other document and take in Gardner's thoughts after he reads this.
Yep.
And then come back next time and.
And Matt and Maureen have, need an opportunity.
Yeah, I think we should table it too. I'd like to see, yeah.
We're definitely going to table.
And I like Gardner with, you know, guidelines and, you know, we need, we need to think about this and, and that's ridiculous 48 hour notice.
And we're not even going to be ready, I don't think, I say, let's put it over as a discussion matter for our next meeting and ask, I will ask my Board Members, please read the three or four papers that we're talking about here. And indeed, please read the open, the public meeting law as well, because I don't think there's an easy answer. And I've been, as you, over and over, I've been a lawyer 54 years, you've heard that. I was a judge for 11 years. I don't have an answer. And I know all of those people on the State Supreme Court, including the author of that particular opinion. And I don't have an answer of what is safe and appropriate for the right of the citizen to speak and for the responsibility of a presiding officer, me or whoever it is, to keep decorum so that it's focused on the public business principally and not the toilet training of the speaker that maybe never got finished some earlier time in life. So, my thought, and I think I've heard it from this end of the table, is we table for the discussion of this matter. And I want to make sure, Steve, if we could, to make sure that all of the Members have the initial communication from our law firm, anything that may have been sent out at my request to Anne, Gardner's superb memo of thoughts if he's, well, yeah, we've talked about it, it's public, and, and Dan's comments, and I don't know if there's anything else.
All together, David, right? All together in the packet for next, yes.
And I'm going to ask you to read it so that we can talk about it next time, not to make any decision on anything, but to try and figure out what if anything we should be doing in response to the Court in order to preserve a proper public meeting respecting all interests of all of the citizens to have their business done properly, of the citizen who speaks that wants to criticize, and any, any presiding officer or other one who has to act in accordance of law to avoid being sued. There is no easy answer.
Is that okay for?
I'd like to add a comment.
Yes, Matt.
So, I believe the reason that our law firm got involved is because your current code of conduct is in violation as it relates to this Supreme Judicial Court Case 13284 that was decided on March 7th of this year. Two violations. First is the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights, Article 19, which protects the right of assembly, and also Article 16, which protects the right of speech. And what happened in Southborough was a violation of those two articles. And I think I, it, I'm familiar with this case because I feel that when this Board centered me several times over the past year, that you violated my ability to speak freely. And so, the reason the law firm's involved is because your current code of conduct opens you up, opens the Town up to liability.
That may be what you would suspect, and it may be correct, but that's something that we don't know. My understanding is that the law firm, they wouldn't have done a paper like this just for the Town, I don't think. For all of their client base, and they sent the same thing to everybody and said, take a look at this and, and use it if you think you can use it.
Well, that's because the AFL, the American Civil Liberties Union is the one that filed the suit for Ms. Baron. And they're the ones that asked the Court to, well, they, they wanted the Court to look at other towns as well besides Southborough, what other towns have code of conducts that have the same type of language. And that's what's in play here, I believe.
I think what you're asking is that our code of conduct be also distributed once again among these papers?
I think the law firm looked at that and that's why.
Wait, you don't, you don't.
It had nothing to do with that. May I, may I, um, Matt may be right that the code of conduct in Danvers is probably, prior to March of this year, probably every code of conduct in the Commonwealth would have made basic assumptions that are no longer valid in, in light of that decision. Murphy Hesse did not look specifically at the Danvers, but I, I believe the memo of the Danvers Everstons was issued in March, and it was a general memo out to all municipal clients providing the details of that case. You may be correct, Matt, in that the language in our code of conduct may no longer be appropriate in light of that. And I think we should probably look at that. But I want to be very clear, Murphy Hesse did not issue a decision for the Town of Danvers saying your code of conduct is in violation of this decision. I think that broadly may be true for a lot of towns and cities. And that's something that's been discussed at NMA.
All right, fair enough.
But I, and I think I also will, in addition to the materials that have been discussed, I've seen some good primers and white papers on the subject, and if I can find those in my office, I'll provide those as well for the next meeting for the purpose of the discussion.
And, Mr. Chairman, prior to the election, when Dan was Chair, he tasked you and I with reviewing the code of conduct. And it did not happen before the election, now that it's changed. I'm happy to reinvigorate that and do that because Dan had had some good samples, but I might suggest that maybe the more appropriate Subcommittee would be Dan and I now, because he had a high interest in this prior, as do I. You opened it, Dan opened it up to anybody who wanted to help. Mr. Duggan doesn't feel he's compelled to follow the code of conduct and has said so publicly. And so I, I'm suggesting that if we're going to have a Subcommittee to do that, it would be Dan and I.
Point of order, that does not, that is not helpful, God. If you and Dan happen to be foolish enough to be willing to be a committee to propose modifications, I think that would be great. But as far as what somebody else is, not to speculate what the lawyers, never speculate to what lawyers were thinking, if they were indeed thinking, never speculate as to what the Court meant, because all they can do is put it in words. And let's not guess and, and let's not question anybody's motivation, please, on this Board. And I think we've probably discussed it enough tonight, except that Gardner and Dan can think about, and Matt and Maureen can think about whether they would like to be on a drafting committee to look at protocols for Danvers in view of that Supreme Court case. Good luck. But maybe if it's okay with everyone, table the discussion for tonight, but have it on the agenda next time. And in the meanwhile, I will ask the Board Members to please review the papers that will be circulated. And I suspect Steve will be pulling out of the Mass Municipal Association stuff. They've probably got some good comment. And so get your reading glasses on. Thank you. Anything else on this matter tonight? Okay. And could we move to the next agenda item?
Town Manager will report to the Board on various items of interest.
And may, I'm sorry, Steve, to interrupt. Will you be discussing trash?
I, I have a very brief update and certainly I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
I just want everybody that's in the room tonight to be satisfied that there is enough trash discussion going on to suit the current events.
Well, I'll start in no particular order. I'll start with an update that ties back to the Resiliency Plan that was approved tonight. But there was discussion about transit. It's, it's pretty common knowledge that we don't have a train station anymore in Danvers. And we're, we're struggling to hang on to the bus routes that we have in locations that aren't particularly helpful for a lot of the zoning that we've done. But an exciting update, some, some folks are probably familiar with the Salem Skipper on-demand shuttle service that Salem has been piloting in their community since December 2020.
I'm not familiar, Steve, would you please?
I would be happy to.
Describe it.
The, um, the city, the city launched an on-demand, it's like an Uber service, but it's for residents. It's very inexpensive. It costs between $1 and $3 per ride, depending on, seniors ride for a dollar, students ride for a dollar, daytime rides are $2, nighttime rides in Salem are $3. But the city pursued a federal earmark through Representative Moulton's office and was working with Danvers, PBD and Beverly on, on potentially piloting, piloting this across the subregion rather than just in Salem. And just for context, since, since Salem launched this effort in December of 2020, they've had 40,000 unique rides on their skipper. More than 2,000 individuals have, have used the service. That comes out to about 1,250 rides per month using the service that they stood up in Salem. So the, the city got a $2.3 million earmark. The planning directors from the four communities worked together for a number of months. PBD has decided not to participate, but Salem, Beverly and Danvers are partnering to use this earmark. And over the next two years, there's a 20% local match, which is $460,000. So divided three ways, divided by two years, that's roughly $75,000 per year. We, we are recommending that we utilize some of the ARPA funds to pilot this in year one. But we think there's a real opportunity to partner with the, some of the education facilities as well as some of the businesses. We're, we're looking at five, and this is working with the planning department and the transportation experts in the region. But we're looking at Danvers Square as one area, the North Shore Community College slash Essex Tech as another area, the Anticott Corridor, including Liberty Tree Mall, and that general as an area, Cherry Hill Industrial Park as an area, and Electronics Avenue as an area. So the way that would work is within, if anyone has ever tried using a scooter in a major city, you can ride them within the areas where they're allowed. And once you leave that, here, that geofenced area, the scooter dies. So essentially, we'll have five sort of bubbles that you can overlay on the Town. And if you're within one of those bubbles, you'll be able to call for an on-demand shuttle for $1 to $3 to take anywhere within the subregion. I've already had preliminary discussions with North Shore Community College. They're very interested in, in contributing. So the idea is that we want to, we want to pilot this and advertise it. Year one, we can rely on the ARPA funds to see how successful it is. And then the goal would be to try to expand this and bring more parties to make contributions as well to continue it after that. We had tried a shuttle service, the, the shuttle concept is not new. One of the issues from a transportation planning perspective on the North Shore, for as long as I've been here, has been how you make those cross-region connections. We have pretty good train service if you're in the right location going north, south and out of the city, but that east-west piece is missing, especially for folks who are in jobs, may not have cars, may not be able to get to the jobs that they have within the subregion. And, and if you see the state, everybody has been talking for a long time about those east-west connections. We tried a pilot program with Beverly a few years ago, which was a different model. We had shuttles that were going from the industrial parks to the, to the depots. But those were, pick it up at a specific time in a specific place and ride it to a specific destination. That model doesn't really work anymore. Anyone who has Uber or Lyft or anything on their phone knows that when you need to ride, you want to be able to pull out your phone and call a ride. And that's what this model is. So Salem has partnered with a vendor. There'll be a lot more information coming out, but this has all come together during the summer. The earmark was made available. They needed, they needed yes or no's and in and outs. And so we're going to, we're going to take the plunge and see how successful this is in year one. And we'll ask them to partner on board for me.
You described it as bubbles. Can you go from one bubble to another bubble?
I think if you, you can call, I don't have that level of detail, but for example, my, my house on Lenham Street is not inside one of the bubbles. So I cannot call Salem Skipper to come to my house on Lenham Street. But within, if you're at.
But if I'm in, but if.
If you're downtown, if you're at Liberty Tree, if you're at the Community College, Essex Tech, you'll be able to use that to have the shuttle come get you. And the idea, the shuttle can't go to all points in Danvers, but we have these five areas where they'll come and make, they'll pick people up and offer those rides within the subregion. I'm not sure what the farthest distance you can take it is, if you can take it within the subregion. You couldn't take it to Boston certainly, but you could, you could take it to Beverly Depot, Salem Depot.
Well, that was a question, could I, could I be at Endicott, or could I be at Essex Tech or in North Shore and take it to the, okay.
Steve, I had a question. What about maybe the North Shore Chamber, you know, trying to help out too, right?
I think between Beverly, Salem and, and Danvers, I think we'll have a real opportunity to ask them to see if they can generate interest. And I think this, I'm hopeful this will be more successful. I think in a perfect world, the NBTA would be providing these kinds of services. Unfortunately, towns and cities will be left on their own to try to figure this out. We've been arguing for a long time that, you know, that towns and cities can't afford to take the kinds of risks. We can't go to a Town Meeting and say, we need a half a million dollars to try this zany idea and it might fail. But we've said that, you know, with, with, whether it's the DOT or the NBTA, those dollars are rounding errors in their capital budget. So they should be more creative in supporting ideas like this. Salem certainly has been successful. And 1,250 rides a month is, is pretty good for a, for a pilot program. And so we're excited to see if we can get some traction with it. And if we can't, then we'll chalk it up as another.
That's a good idea.
Experiment that didn't work out, but there's a promise. And at least in year one, we'll be able to rely on some of the ARPA funds to see how it goes.
Thank you, Steve. That sounds very interesting.
Brief update, everybody in the room is aware of the refugee crisis in Massachusetts. The Governor recently declared a state of emergency. There are currently 20,000 people in the Emergency Assistance Program. Danvers is pretty familiar with this program. I sent a, a pretty detailed note to the Board this summer. As you recall, back in 2015, we had about 185 families who had been displaced and were living in motels and hotels in Danvers. At the time, that represented about 15% of the total population. Presently, we have 53 families who are, who are in a local establishment. Having been here during the last peak, I will say that it's been a very different experience thus far. The state has been very attentive to the concerns and needs of towns and cities. They have a provider onboard called Center Board, which has social workers who are culturally aware of and similar to. aware of and similar to the types of families that we're seeing. So they're attentive to their needs and understand, you know, what their food choices and cultural expectations, et cetera. So staff is on site at the facility. That was not the case last time around. The state has also been very proactive in making sure that they engage with school districts across the Commonwealth where these hotels are placed. They're being mindful about distributing students evenly, families with students evenly across communities so that one community isn't burdened. But it's a real, I mean, if we step back, and as I noted in the email, I think it's tragic that we have that many people who don't have places to live. My assumption and belief based on the meetings I've attended is that this is likely to last at least through the, you know, through the winter into the spring. Probably next summer, we'll be, we'll be contending with this. But we've had, we've had good collaboration with the schools and the police and fire and public health, DEI. The state has been on weekly calls. Our parents have been on those calls. And so as we're getting ready for the school year, we're starting to partner with the schools to think about how we want to message that, to make sure that, you know, we're as welcoming as we can to these families who are, who are here and who are struggling. And I think, you know, obviously, I'll have more to share as this continues to move forward. But, but at this point, as I said, we have about 53 families in town. There are some school-aged children. We will be welcoming them into the schools. The state is providing some resources to support those students, which was not the case last time around. And we've also had help from some of the faith-based organizations within the region. Haitian Creole is the predominant non-English language that we're seeing here and elsewhere. So that's, that's been a challenge that we didn't face last time around. And I'm happy to take any questions.
And I think that there's been some people that have stepped up to try to get some clothing, donations, or drop off. So watch, you know, the social media, see if we can help these families.
I had a question about the fall special meeting. Do we know, do you have a kind of a tentative agenda for what items will be presented?
That, yes. That process was going to get started in earnest next month, but we're looking now at a February date. And the reason for that is twofold. The two primary reasons for the fall town meeting were the NBTA zoning that was, that was, had a 1231 requirement. We reached out to the state and said, would a February town meeting be okay? And they said, yeah, that's absolutely fine. So we have been racing to try to get that done before the 1231 deadline. And the second piece was, we've been working for a number of years now on the plan for the public courts facility. And we have essentially the right of first refusal on the UCM site by the old state hospital. There's some pretty extensive remediation that the state has agreed to do up there. They need to get appraisal started. That's going much slower than we anticipated. So we thought maybe by the fall, we'd be ready to start that conversation coming. That's all. So there are other items on there, including one of the updates I was going to give you in a minute. But we'll get that, we'll get those material up to the board while we're doing this. And so I guess leading right into the third update, town meeting voted to set up the ad-hoc study committee this spring to look at historic district designations, the demo delay bylaw, and any other related bylaws that was, this was sort of stemmed from the 42 Summer Street article to create a single parcel historic district. The town moderator appointed representatives from the ZBA, the Historic District Commission, the Preservation Commission, the Finance Committee, and the Planning Board. So we have Quillan Doherty from the ZBA, Dan Gagman from HDC, Lee George from Preservation, Eric Mitchell from FinCom, and Jim Sears from Planning. That group is supported by Aaron Henry, our director of land use, as well as Tim Huda, our building commissioner. And they've had one meeting. They have another meeting scheduled for 8:31. And their intent, per the vote of town meetings, to have recommendations ready for the February special town meeting. Just a quick note, the North Shore Chamber State of the Region is scheduled for September 13th at 7:30 in the morning at the Marriott in Peabody on Centennial Drive. If anybody is interested in attending, please reach out to Ann, and we can get seats reserved for that. That's always a, that's always a nice event to hear from the mayors across the region and the administrators, what's going on in their communities. So then just reach out to Ann if that's something that is of interest. We have the Budget Conference Committee, the follow-up meeting from June is scheduled for August 24th at 6:00 PM in the police station. I sent an email out a week or so, a few weeks ago, but I'm going to send a reminder out, and I'm going to, I'm going to also copy folks' private emails, because I think we've had some, some technical difficulties with the multi-factor authentication, which has, I think, frustrated a lot of employees and officials. This is a cybersecurity insurance requirement, but it's proven to be awfully onerous. And so I'm going to make sure that that comes out both ways. But that's August 24th, 6:00 PM at the police station. Quick sort of general note, Commonwealth-wise, as some folks know Jeff Beckwith, who's been the executive director of the MMA for the past 31 years, is retiring in September. And I had the opportunity to serve on the search committee for the MMA to pick his replacement. We had counselors and mayors, HR directors, DEI directors from the Boston region, from the Berkshires, large communities, small communities. And we unanimously and enthusiastically recommended Adam Chapdulane, who's the former town manager in Arlington, former president of the MMA, had worked for a number of years prior to local government in the state legislature, so understands how laws get passed. And honestly, one of the most important jobs that Jeff Beckwith and his team had was playing defense and preventing bad bills from getting passed in Boston, and looking out for the interests of towns and cities, and making sure that unfunded mandates were properly identified. So we're very excited. Adam starts in September in that role, and again, it'll be the first change in that role that I think as long as anybody can remember, at least the day. And last but not least, you know, David insisted that we talk trash a little bit tonight, so I will, I will be brief, and then I will take questions, which I'm sure are coming. Postcards went out this week to some households. We received ours yesterday, just kind of informing residents that the change is coming. We are still looking at a sort of after-school get started, you know, second week of September for the cut-over date. Just for some context, and I'll, well, let me, let me lead you with the question we did. So the cards went out, we're getting some questions from residents, why can't we buy our second barrels in advance that we know we're going to need? And the reason for that, I think, is twofold. One, what we have learned from other communities who have gone through this transition is that oftentimes, folks think they need a second barrel, then they, they start using this much larger barrel, the much larger recycling bin, and then they realize they don't need the second bin. We are in the process of distributing 15,600 trash and recycling bins, each and every one of the 7,800 households in Danvers. We are also preparing education materials to try to help residents understand how this new automated process is going to work. And so for two reasons, we wanted to get this new program in place and let people live with it, the thoughtless for several months, maybe it'll be for less than that, but at least let the program get rolling before we redirect staff and consume administrative time to try to set up the billing and accounting for these secondary barrels. But also importantly, when, when, when the DPW team worked with the vendor coming out of the procurement process, we learned that, and we know this because we have the data, that the average household in Danvers produces 65 gallons of trash per week. Obviously, I mean, it doesn't take a mathematician to realize that that means that many use more than that. But we know that this can is going to work for the majority of residents. We also know from experience that people change their behaviors. Some people will produce more than that, will learn to produce less than that by recycling more, by being more thoughtful about what goes into the waste stream. Clearly, that's not going to work for everyone. And so the commitment from the spring stands, there will be an opportunity for people to buy a second barrel if they need a second barrel. But again, given the, given the scale of the goal out and the logistics involved with getting each and every household its barrel, making sure that the system is up and running, and making sure that this is going to work, we're not trying to tackle issuing and issuing a second barrel, some of which a month later, people are in call and say, can you kind of get this thing, I don't need it, and I don't want to pay for it? That's been the number one call we've received so far, I want my second barrel upfront. We may shorten that timeline from several months to less than that. But we're asking people to be patient, let the staff get this, probably get this new program and this transition in place before we, before we do get around. So as I said, we're, we'll be working to get, the postcards were sort of the teaser, we'll be working to get out the details on social media, in the mail, on the website, for people in advance of the transition, so they know what to expect, where they need to position these containers, you know, what, what the schedule is going to be, and the like. So I'm sure there are questions in the habit page, though, but I wanted to provide sort of a general overview of where things stand today.
Thank you, Steve.
And that actually was the last of my updates, so.
Can I follow up?
Please.
Steve, yes. Twice you've sent out these cards, given a picture of the barrels, and as you call it, as a teaser. But there's a lot more information that needs to go out.
Yep.
And the city of Amesbury put out a six-page document about their new automated solid waste collection, curbside recycling, the calendar for when you're going to be recycled. I didn't give this to you last week because you were camping, but maybe you can give this to DPW.
Well, we, there's a, there's a final.
There's a final, but this was done months ago.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Months ago.
No, it's.
But we haven't seen anything like that.
I have a draft in my inbox.
We haven't seen anything.
Understood.
All we've seen is pictures. I did ask you to check on the House and Senate bills regarding paint recycling. Can you put on that list? Are there any bills filed for styrofoam? And if I can lead into styrofoam, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just some facts, eight reasons to ban styrofoam. It's a known hazardous substance.
Hey, God, by the way.
It leaches into food and drink. It's in the air and on your skin. It's toxic just to make it. It's a principal litter, meaning it's everywhere. It still depletes the ozone layer, just like with oil, there are spills. And even in the landfill, it's not safe, and they're not supposed to go into recycling, but it has to go into your trash. And given the talk about banning styrofoam, I would hope that this board would make a recommendation to our Board of Health to make a statement regarding the toxic styrofoam, and maybe make a recommendation to this board, and I'm not asking the Board of Health to ban it, but make a statement so we can digest it. It's up to us and town meeting whether to ban it or not. And as a side note, the Danvers Historical Society Board of Trustees voted this month unanimously to ban single-use plastics and styrofoam from our properties. Small step, but we have to start making these steps. And it's this article on the paint stewardship that says it's the critical first step to getting paint recycled and out of the system. And as we mentioned earlier, food waste, textiles, the more we can take out of the waste stream, the easier it will be for people to live with the one barrel. So I think we're a little behind the gun on those discussions. And I had some other thoughts, but I think that's enough for the time being.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
This is not, I never did. You know, four, five years ago, flashlight batteries were not supposed to be put in the rubbish. Then it all changed, and you could put it in the rubbish. I still cringe every time I have flashlight batteries. I know they shouldn't be in the rubbish, even though that's the place that I can put it. So.
All right, enough of that. Let me see.
I have a comment about trash.
Yes, Matt, the closing comment?
No, this is just a comment, a follow-up to Steve's.
Would you speak into that?
Okay. I'm just following up on Steve's comments on the trash program. So we all received an email, I think, yesterday from a resident who wants a new second 64-gallon cart, thinking, he's saying that, you know, he generates considerable amount of household trash. And I'm thinking to myself that if you can fill up one of those bins, then you kind of really need to rethink your lifestyle, I think. I think we missed an opportunity going down this path where we could have instituted a program, Pay as You Throw, which some other communities on the North Shore have implemented, where you have to go to a hardware store and buy a plastic bag that has the town seal on it. And that's, that's how your trash is picked up by Republic. And so there's an incentive there to kind of rethink about the items that you purchase, if it's excessive packaging, or maybe there's items that you can actually do, like food waste composting, communities have implemented that. So I'm not really in favor of allowing residents to purchase a second cart. I think that's, that doesn't really provide any incentive. I think if you had, you gave them the first cart and then required them to buy these plastic bags, then they may rethink about how they're actually disposing, or what, how much they're disposing. Just my thought on that.
They may comment on that, please. Matt, in my trash folder, I have facts on throw as you pay. And I wanted to bring that up, but the town has gone so far along with this new system that it may be too late to backtrack and talk about pay as you throw. But I would ask the question, can we cancel this trash contract, and how long are we locked in?
At this point, no, we wouldn't.
Can't cancel?
I think, I think it's an interesting question of whether we could.
Remind you.
One of the issues we had when we, when we went through, and we talked about this in previous meetings, is that we asked for pricing from the haulers for both automated and manual. Of the four responses we got, three of them refused to give us a price on manual collection, and the fourth priced it so much higher than automatic, it was quite obvious what they were doing. So it's difficult to say if we had insisted, if we had made the switch out of the gate to a pay-as-you-throw, there would have had to, we would have had to make some assumptions about what tonnage would look like under a program like that. It would have been really difficult to make that. Maybe it would have resulted in a drastic reduction, we don't know that. But I do think it's an interesting question about if the alternative to a second can was the pink bags that you're referring to, what would that, what would that mean in terms of collection, right? Because the way that these new trucks work, you have a single driver with a camera system inside the cab, they pull up, your can needs to be, you know, within the range distance from the street, the claw takes it, dumps it, drops it, and they move on. So if, if every 10th house or every 5th house had a pink bag or two, we would need to know from, what would that look like in terms of cost? Because now, if that driver has to put on the hazard lights, check for traffic, get out, walk to the back, pick it up, throw it in, get back in the truck, that's going to have a big impact on the routes when they're doing 20% of the town in a particular day, which doesn't mean we shouldn't ask the question. So we can certainly take a look at that.
It feels to me like show and tell would be a good thing at this point, that we have at the next meeting, I think this is a big television board, I don't know what it is, and we have televised, and maybe there are Youtubes already, which show how this thing works. People in Salem tell me it works great. I have seen it work in Somerville, I thought it was amazing. I think that a lot of the mystery might go, if people could see just how it, how it happens, and how this mysterious arm can come off a truck and pick up something without a human being there. I don't know, but it'll be nice to see. How about show and tell, Steve?
Well, we had the cans in the back of the room for many months, but they magically disappeared.
Not the cans, I want to see the arm picking up the can.
Let's see what I can find on YouTube.
Okay. Other, Matt, did you?
I'll say something, David, that's pretty funny. You're, you're great. I do like what Matt said about, you know, the bags and Dan, you know, that's good. When we say the average family, what, what is the average family nowadays, you know, for the one, for the one can? I feel that, like you said, Steve, maybe right, not, not now that they can't buy it, but if someone wants to buy one, we should maybe say, okay, you can't do it right now, but maybe after the program rolls out a couple of weeks or a month from then, because there could be a need for it, you know? So I don't want to shut anybody down.
Nope. And I think that's, that's been the messaging since the spring, is that, I mean, the timing has been a little bit ambiguous, but the, you know, as we started to ramp up with the contractor, looking at the staffing we have to manage this rollout, setting up those secondary accounts and tracking who's going to get two versus one before the program even launches.
Yeah, no, 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 let's get the program in place first, right.
Get it, make sure it works, and then we'll certainly, we'll address that quickly.
But if they want, if they find a need for it. But if they want, if they find a need for it and like, if they, if they say it's wasteful and that you can't get your money back, it's non-refundable, so, but I think they should have the option.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Dan, did you have other comments?
Not, not on trash.
Yeah. Did you have anything on?
Not on trash, no. I'm all set.
What about, where are we next? That was the unexpected trash talk.
Item 14.
Where are we?
Item 14.
Motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar.
Who's seconded, I'm sorry?
Second.
Thank you.
And I'm accusing myself, I have one of the other.
His block party.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I didn't vote.
I'm not voting. I'm not voting for that block party.
Correspondents, select board, new business, previous new business, updates, and select board closing comments.
Card, do you want to proceed?
I would like to, so we all did receive the emails about the trash, so we're all aware. I would ask, however, that we, the public, not understanding that we can't individually respond, because if you've sent it to all of us, it could be a violation of open meeting law if we start individually responding. So it's always been left to the, to the town manager or to the chairman to do a response. But if you respond, just CCS so I know it's handled.
I want to just clear, I mentioned the email issues. I did issue a response to that email earlier today, did everybody get that?
I saw it.
I'll, I'll look.
Okay, all right.
Okay. But in general, you know, it, it's sometimes hard to know whether someone, some people send them to us individually, and then we have the right to respond because it's, if, if Mark sends me an email, he sent me an email, and I'm responding to his email. If he included all of us, I can't. I pick on Mark because I know he understands it. You know, so we all saw that one. I will say that we had some good news, and let me pull up the email that predicates this discussion. I want to say 15 years ago, plus or minus, we had an issue in town where we were trapped in a 40B situation. And it used to be the form of swingaway golf. We got, they built a very large building, and because of the 40B law, they were allowed to do so. And pretty much if, if you, if a city, municipality is under 10% of affordable stock in town, developers come in and they can forego almost all of the ZBA rules. They're still compelled by wetlands, they're still compelled by a couple of things. But in this case, they had far too much density, far too much, too close encroachment to the sidelines. And at that time, we realized we had an issue. And whatever board was available at that time, Dan and I helped form a Affordable Housing Committee. That grew into an Affordable Housing Trust that the town meeting approved, and the trust has been working over the past 10 years or more to, to protect that 40B, protect us from that 40B. On August 4th of 2023, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, formerly the Department of Housing and Community Development, released new figures based on the 2020 census. And good news is, we are over our 10%. We are no longer, we are, we weren't, we were over, we were over previously. However, there's always a question when it comes around to a census, a new census, they recalculate. We are, we are continuing to be over our 10%. We are not, we may embrace a friendly 40B that the town believes is, the town and developer may work together and establish friendly 40B if it benefits us, but with what we have already on the SHI, the housing, the subsidized housing inventory, what we have on it and what we have in the pipeline, we, and with our new inclusionary zoning language, or revised inclusionary zoning languages, including the overlay district language, and including updates to our inclusionary zoning language at the last town meeting, we will stay ahead of that 10% as far as we, as far as we can see into the future.
Thank you.
So it's good news for the town, it's good news, it's a good protection for the town that they, developers are still compelled to our, to the thoughtful zoning that the planning and the ZBA looks at.
Thank you, Dan. Did you have anything to add, or do you want to come back to the veterans?
Yeah, I'll come back.
Okay. Matt, closing comments?
Yeah, just one thing on the, the Budget Conference Committee meeting scheduled for the 24th at the Police Department. Can you just expand a little bit on what, what the agenda looks like and what the intent is like at the, what to get out of that meeting?
Sure. Yeah, so the, the Budget Conference Committee was called coming out of the last budget process. When Dan was Chair, there was a lot of discussion at the end of the budget process about school funding, special ed costs, some of the drivers that have really been impacting the budget in recent years, including the Essex Tech assessment, inflation, healthcare, and, and drivers really that, you know, we, we manage the costs, we are in control of pretty well, but there are things outside of the town's control that absolutely impact our budget, like every community, we're impacted by Prop 2 and 1/2. And looking ahead, you know, we've all seen what inflation has been the last year or so, we don't expect some of these costs like pension and Essex Tech to abate anytime soon. So as we're thinking ahead to the FY '25 budget process, we're, we're seeing, and I think, you know, we've, we started this discussion as part of each and every financial summit, that, you know, there are financial and budgetary decisions and actions that have been taken over the years that have kept us ahead of a fork in the road. But the, the decision point has been accelerated by, obviously, the, you know, pandemic, special education costs, inflation, et cetera. We are anticipating by next year being at a point where we're either talking openly about service reductions or figuring out how to have revenue match demand. So at the 11th hour of the budget process, Dan suggested that was not the appropriate time to engage in that discussion. So we, we pulled representatives from FinCom, Select Board, School Committee, and Library Trustees together, along with staff, in June. And we pulled, staff pulled together a presentation, which can be found on the town's website, where we sort of dug into some of those budget drivers, put those into some context, and really laid out the menu of options that, that boards and decision makers have in terms of which direction we want to go. The thought was, start that conversation in June, pick it back up in August, so that going into the '25 budget process, we have a pretty clear idea of what, you know, what we want to, to try to accomplish, so that departments aren't left developing budgets unsure of what, you know, the will of the, of the major boards is going to be. So what we'll do on the 24th, we, we made a general presentation to the, to the group in June, we had a lot of questions asked in that meeting, some particular areas that members of those boards and committees wanted to see us drill into. And so we have some slides prepared that are going to, that are going to drill into some of those ideas in greater detail. And the email that went out last week, this is a public meeting, but it's really, it's meant to be a discussion among the boards. So I've, I've extended on behalf of this board an invitation to the School Committee, Library Trustees, and Finance Committee, I'm going to resend that about a week out so that it's fresh. But we're hoping that folks from each of those boards will come, hear the presentation, offer some comments and ideas and thoughts, to see if there's consensus among the major boards about which direction we're, we're going to go as we start the budget process.
All right. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up? The meeting in June had representatives from each of those. Is the meeting in next week going to be open to other board or committee members?
I, I suggested to the Chair that, that yes, that we consider extending the, extending the invitation to the, to each member of each of the major boards and have a, and have a discussion. So yes.
Thank you. Where are we?
Me, Maureen.
Maureen.
Hi. Last but not least, I think that's good, I mean, to have that, to get ahead of the curve, everybody knows that with inflation, cost of living. So this shows that our town manager and the board is taking everything serious here. I think that's great. I do want to say thank you to Chuck Farrow and all his staff, all, all the Street Division, they've done a great job, you know, with all the paving. And I hope everybody's having a great summer so far.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any other comments, closing comments from board members? I have none except thank you for putting up my clumsy, um, thank you, Bill. I do, I have my coaches on your side. Dan, closing comment?
Please. Before we close, I'd like to make two disclosures. One, I signed as a selectman, a coalition against bigger trucks on our roadways. If anybody's interested in information or wants to sign that petition, I have the information. I also signed a petition for environmental mass, asking Walmart to stop selling bee-killing pesticides. So I pay attention to what's going on in our environment. And all our veterans, thank you for your service. And with that, Mr. Chairman, you can adjourn the meeting if you wish.
Thank you very much, Dan. Thanks, everybody, for attending. Good night, meeting adjourned.
Can you see him, Matt?
I decapitated you. Your microphone.